Please take your seats. The meeting is about to begin. Remember to speak into the microphone as this meeting is being recorded for public record. Please stand by. We are going on air in five, four, three, two, one.
Okay, good morning and welcome, as Yochiel loves it, I say, welcome to the March 4th Planning Board meeting. First, I want to welcome our newest member Keith Marks, his first meeting, and he's a great guy, and I think he's going to be a great addition to the Planning Board, and we're all looking forward to working with you, so.
Looking forward to it. Thank you.
There's one change on the agenda, which is we are moving the porous surface requirements for parking to a continuance. Other than that, it's all the same. So with that, can I get a motion to approve the after-action report for last meeting?
Motion to approve?
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
Can I ask you a quick question about that?
Of course.
When we continue one of the items, is there a vote taken? You know, because I remember there being a question about like the Vendome, was it Vendome? About whether we should just close it out or continue it. And I think there was a vote taken.
That was continued to the April meeting.
No, I know, but on the minutes, I didn't see that there was like the vote reflected.
Oh, I'm sorry. We will correct that. We'll correct that. Sorry.
Thanks. You mean as opposed, because I saw that it said it was moved. You were saying.
It said it was moved.
Okay. Can we add that, please?
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Great. With that, I will turn it over to Nick, City Attorney.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Today's meeting of the Planning Board will be conducted in a hybrid format with the board physically present in the commission chambers at Miami Beach City Hall, and applicant, staff, members of the public appearing either in person or virtually via Zoom. To participate virtually in today's meeting, the public may dial 1-877-853-5257, and enter the webinar ID, which is 861-4342-6327, or log into the Zoom app and enter the webinar ID, which is 861-4342-6327. Anyone wishing to speak on an item must click the raise hand icon in the Zoom app or dial star nine if they're participating by phone. If you're appearing on behalf of a business, corporation, or another person, you need to register as a lobbyist with the City Clerk's office. If you haven't registered yet, you should register before you speak to the board. You don't have to register as a lobbyist if you're speaking only on behalf of yourself and not any other party, or if you're testifying as an expert witness providing only scientific, technical, or other specialized information or testimony in this public meeting, or if you're appearing as a representative of a neighborhood association without any compensation or reimbursement for your appearance to express support of or opposition to any item. Expert witnesses and representatives of neighborhood associations shall, prior to appearing, disclose in writing to the city clerk their name, address, and the principal on whose behalf they're communicating. If you're an architect, attorney, or employee representing an applicant or an objector, you must register as a lobbyist. These rules apply whether you're appearing in favor of or against an item, or encouraging or arguing against its passage to be modification or continuance. And lastly, I'd like to swear in any members of the public or staff who will be testifying today. Please raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you've given in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Nick. The first item is a request for continuance, Planning Board File 2406561235 Washington Avenue Night Club. Mr. Uh, we got to start with.
Actually, Mr. Larkin, do you want to speak on the application?
Yes, thanks, Michael. Michael Larkin, 200 South Biscayne Boulevard here representing the applicant. We are working on compliance with some of the staff conditions. It's taken us longer than what we like. We would like to have a continuance until the April hearing.
That address was probably the first nightclub I ever partied at. It was Club Z like 20 years ago.
It's a special place.
Twenty years ago. What is it? So it's going to be a new?
It's still going to be a nightclub. It's just.
But a new name, because we looked it up and there's a current name there for that club, but.
The name might stay the same, but they're implementing a different operating plan, hoping to attract a different type of entertainment there. So, but, you know, Michael has put in some rigorous staff conditions, and instead of just saying no, we're trying to figure out, is there a way to comply?
Got it. Okay.
Should we take public comment?
Yeah, anyone here to speak on that? Anyone on Zoom?
There's nobody on Zoom.
Okay, closed public hearing. Any questions or someone want to move it?
We're seeing a motion to continue it to the April 8th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
John moved it. Yochiel second. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll see you again today. All right, next one, Planning Board File 240734, increasing and enhancing porous service requirements for parking lots. That's what I just discussed. That was moved to a continuance.
We need a, so this is one where we are still taking into consideration the comments from the Planning Board and the public in January, and we haven't been able to finalize the recommendation yet in the report for the PB 240734. So we are asking the board to continue this to the April 8th meeting.
Okay, anyone here to speak on this? Anyone on Zoom?
Nope.
Okay, someone want to move it?
Motion to continue.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, it's moved, so moved. All right. On to progress reports. First one is Planning Board File 220553455 Lincoln Road.
Okay, so this is, this staff report begins on page 17 of the board packages, and this is PB 22-00553 for 455 Lincoln Road. This is an application that initially was approved by the Planning Board for an NIE on November 22nd of 2022, and their BTR for the operation, including entertainment, was issued on October 28th of 2024. The COP requires that the applicant appear before the board for a progress report within 90 days of the issuance of the BTR. Now, as part of any sort of standard progress report, we advise the board of any citations or complaints issued by the Code Compliance Department regarding the operation of the venue. As it noted on page 17 and 18, there were a couple violations issued regarding the operation. One was on 11/17/24. This, on the notes indicate that while conducting a foot patrol in the area, an individual was observed playing instruments, and a woman was observed performing by dancing. Restaurant manager was informed that the permit is needed to conduct street performance activity, and he understood. The restaurant came into compliance immediately by ceasing all activity. There are some other violations regarding sanitation and window coverings, but the operational violation was also on 12/11/24, where there was a COP condition violation as well for performers in costumes observing entering the establishment with a silk backdrop in front. And the restaurant was noted as having a BTR for indoor entertainment, but nothing on the exterior, and the entertainment outside would require a special event perm, which they did not have, and the restaurant came into compliance once they were notified. We also noted there was a noise complaint on 2/22/2025. Now, we are recommending that the board hear from the applicant and consider whether or not they want to consider setting a revocation hearing. The suiting that a revocation or modification hearing could be set due to the notice room requirements would be May 6th of 2025. I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Wait, Michael, I have a question about this. So it says the BTR allows them to have entertainment inside, right?
Right.
You're saying it was a violation to see performers walking.
Well, no, not walking. They had a performer outside the establishment, too.
Oh, they're performing outside.
Outside, right.
Okay.
Good morning. Mike Winopoulos, 200 South Biscayne Boulevard. I join today with Michael Larkin and my colleague Nick Rodriguez. We represent the applicant, Andres Carne de Rez. The executive manager, the executive chef, and the owner are on the way. They're stuck in traffic. If you'd like, I can give you a quick walkthrough of the actual venue itself, or we could just jump right to some of these violations.
Whatever you want.
Okay, so I'll give you a quick rundown. So the restaurant is located on 455 Lincoln Road and Drexel Avenue. Andres Carne de Rez is a unique Colombian restaurant. It's a world-class steakhouse, and they provide live entertainment and occasional performances by staff. They've received several approvals throughout the years. In 2020, they received their first COP for a neighborhood impact establishment, which subsequently expired. In 2021, they received HPB approval for a variance for the rooftop awning and to operate an outdoor bar. And then in 2022, they went back to get a new conditional use permit for the prior one that had expired. Their BTR was issued on October 28th, 2024, and on the screen you could see some of the conditions laid out by the 2022 COP. They're a relatively new restaurant. They've been open for close to four months now. So the owner and the restaurant and the general manager is learning and educating themselves on the conditions of the COP, most of which were, as staff mentioned, immediately complied with, some of which were immediately complied with as well, but there were some hiccups along the way. I think staff mentioned the first COP, which was, first COP violation took place on November 17th, and this one was there were performers dancing outside. The restaurant and the general manager mistakenly believed that that was allowed as part of their COP. When they were alerted that they weren't, they halted the performances. Then they hired a permit expediter to work with the Lincoln Business Improvement District to amend the Lincoln Road Culture Activation Permit to allow them then to have performers outside dance with between two and 10-minute intervals twice a day.
And what's the status of that?
So that's active, and it goes, it was active from September of last year to October of 2025.
It's approved?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. I believe the second violation that was mentioned was a sanitary violation. This was just a bad timing. They received a big crate with a table, and the crate was too big to move inside, so they dismantled the crate, took the table inside. Between that time is when they received the violation. The general manager actively educated all the employees to completely dismantle and properly throw away any garbage and waste, and then that violation was subsequently complied with a few days later. This is another active proactive investigation. Here, they had, as part of the Lincoln Road Culture Activation Permit, they were allowed to display cows as a furniture for one of the events. They put a table, a coffee table, and a bench against their building under the awning. An investor investigator told them they were not allowed to do that, so they promptly removed the furniture, brought it inside, and that was complied with. The last violation, sorry, the violation regarding the silk backdrop, they had a permit. They were doing a special event inside, and they had, they hired an event planner who put a silk backdrop outside for guests to walk through. Again, this was a proactive investigation. There was foot patrol. They alerted them that the silk backdrop required a special permit, so they promptly removed that, brought the silk backdrop inside, and that was immediately complied. The, there was another instance where they had, their windows were vandalized. So they covered the windows. They were keyed and graffitied. So they, they, meaning the general manager, hired a company to put, you know, pretty logos, and they covered the windows entirely. They found out they were not allowed to do that, so they just removed those logos, and the windows are currently vandalized, but they have no issue with it, so long as the city is okay with it. The very last complaint that Mr. Blues mentioned of a foot patrol for a separate complaint. They heard music coming from 455. There was a birthday. They were singing Happy Birthday on top of the rooftop. The inspector notified of the general manager of the noise ordinance. The general manager halted the song, the music.
Is 1604 Drexel a condo?
1604 Drexel, I'm not sure.
That was the origin of the complaint?
Yes, exactly.
Do you know, Michael?
Let me look it up.
Inspector was there for a separate complaint at 1604 Drexel and overheard Happy Birthday songs.
That's right.
So.
How many, how many managers do you have currently?
There's one full-time manager, and he works weekly every day. And then there's an executive chef and about 100 different employees.
So have you sat down with them all, or have they sat down with them all and given them all?
Yes, correct. The general manager is aware of all the conditions in the COP and has been actively educating the staff so that none of these things happen. And as we mentioned, and as staff mentioned, a majority of these items were immediately complied with. So they are, you know, showing a good faith effort to continue. They haven't violated any real noise ordinances. They haven't been given any violations contradicting the conditions in the COP. So they're actively working on it and would respectfully request this.
Yeah, are you finished?
Yeah.
Is there anyone on Zoom?
No, there's not.
Anyone in here to speak on this? All right, I'm going to close the book again. You know, I'm just going to give you my comments. First of all, I've been to the one in Columbia, and it's an amazing operation, and my gut is they can do a lot of that in Columbia that they're, they technically can't do here. I think all the violations are pretty minor. I think it's a great addition to Lincoln Road. I've been there many times, and they've been unbelievable, the staff. Obviously, these are technical things that have to be worked through. Obviously, I'm going to let the rest of my board members comment, but I think we should just continue this for a couple of months and see, you know, see if they can get rectified. It sounds like everything was pretty minor that can be rectified. So that's just my thoughts, but I'll start with Keith or whoever.
Yeah, I agree. Lincoln is a very difficult area to manage, for sure, and these are all minor complaints, in my opinion. So I think, see if they learn, you know.
Yeah, I agree, too. I mean, we could just, you know, give it a few months, see what happens. But I have a question for staff. You mentioned that, well, both of you, you know, you had the entertainment or the dancing outside, and then you went to the Lincoln Road bid and got approval from them for that. But our order says there's no outdoor entertainment allowed. Wouldn't that have to come back to us for?
No, because that would be, this would be on, this would be on public property, so that's different.
There's a separate space.
Okay.
There's a. There's a separate space. It's sort of open air on the roof.
Oh, so that's.
That's separate. That's separate. I think we're talking about.
We're talking about.
On the Lincoln Road ground floor level, on the public sidewalk. That's something that would be part of the special event permit versus the COP.
Okay, thank you.
I think the issue was that they were outside on Lincoln Road.
On public property.
A performer dancing.
Right, but now you're allowed to do that according, you got a permit for that.
Twice a day, two to 10-minute intervals.
I'm assuming not very late at night.
No, no.
Okay. Okay, any other comments, or can we just move this?
Just, I'm just to clarify that the 1604 Drexel is an apartment building, you know, a block away.
But what the attorney said was that the noise complaint was at, was about something at 1604.
Yes, correct.
As opposed to somebody from 1604 complaining about the Lincoln Road.
Correct. It was unrelated to our applicant's property.
So I'll make a motion to continue it for two months.
To the May 6th meeting?
To the May.
I'll second.
Yeah, just like I said, they all seem minor. Just make sure that they educate them on, you know, all the requirements of the COP so that, you know, because again, it's a great addition, and Lincoln Road needs places like that, and we want it to survive and do well, so.
And I'm sure there are probably 100 proactive investigations that came up with nothing, you know, so.
Well, majority of these are the, is exactly that.
We only hear about the ones where they flagged something, but I'm sure there were other investigations where there, you know. All right, so Jonathan moved it. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so we'll see you on this one in May, okay?
Great, thank you.
The May 6th.
What's that?
The meeting is on May 6th.
Oh, yeah, sorry, okay. All right, next progress report is Planning Board File 240707, Le Hardin Bouche Ray.
And this staff report begins on page 31 of the board packages. I think everybody in the board except for Keith Marks was here in January when this application was last heard by the board. And on January 7th, the board approved a modification to include the operation of the third floor. The first two floors were initially approved for the operation of a restaurant on May 23rd of 2023. On January 28th, the BTR was issued for the first and second floors. They had not yet received the permit or finalized the construction for the third floor of the restaurant, but they were able to open the first and second floors based upon the COP, and the BTR was issued on February 28th. Now, on February 13th, the planning department sent a cure letter to the applicant, and this was response to a code citation that was issued for having an outdoor entertainment in the form of a live band in the exterior courtyard. The cure letter advised the applicant to appear before the board for a progress report which is scheduled for today. Now, as noted in our staff report, it's very clear.
Michael, sorry to interrupt you again. So was the viola, I can't remember. Do they have entertainment?
No, because, no, continue. Entertainment is prohibited south of history.
Okay, so they had no, so, okay.
Yeah, so entertainment is prohibited.
So it was two things, a special event without a permit and entertainment.
And they can't, so they can't get a special event permit, and they can't have entertainment even with a special event permit.
Okay.
So they had.
Probably their first week of opening, and they're trying to garner support.
This was a flagrant violation.
Yeah.
In this regard, especially because entertainment is prohibited south of history. The, there's no ambiguity here. There was a live band. But we do believe, we are strongly recommending that the board does set a revocation modification hearing for May 6th. Not to say the board has to modify it at that time, but we do believe, based upon what happened here in January, that in abundance of caution, the board should set a revocation modification hearing, monitor the property for the next two months.
What would you modify if the COP prohibited what they did?
Well, the board, the board could take away the operation of the third floor. You know, they could, they could modify the hours of operation.
All right.
I mean, I do think that there should be something, there should be some consequences for having the flagrant violation, but for the board to make the decision in May. But we do think in order to open that, keep that open, the board should set a revocation modification hearing for May 6th, because we do have to advertise that in accordance with the 30-day notice requirements, so that's our recommendation at this point.
Is another option to just continue the status of the hearing?
The board could, the board could continue the progress report as well.
Okay, got it. Go ahead.
Good morning. Nicholas Rodriguez here on behalf of the applicant and owner, 81 Washington LLC. As Michael mentioned, we, there's not really a defensible position here that we didn't know. This was, you know, this is a Henry Ho Hauser building that the applicant spent over $30 million restoring and renovating. After about three years in the permitting and licensing process, the owner got carried away at their grand opening. This was just for the grand opening. This isn't how they intend to operate the restaurant. It's not consistent with their operations, not consistent with their COP. So they did just, it was supposed to just be a simple, you know, couple of songs by this person who is a singer, who is a friend of the owner. It turned into more than that, and unfortunately has led to this violation. The owner has paid the fine. They would be considered a repeat violator if it were to happen again, and of course, we have consequences before this board as well, so we're not opposing continuing this progress report and you guys continuing to monitor. We're not planning to have any more events or entertainment at the restaurant. To the extent that there are other noise complaints that have been made, they have, none of them have ripened into violations. And despite that, the owners are still making changes at the property with respect to their outdoor speaker layout to make sure that whatever complaints are coming in, whether they're well-founded or not, that they're being good neighbors. So that they really are kind of working through the initial phases of opening and their COP. That's separate and apart from the event that happened at their grand opening. That was a violation. There is no, you know, kind of dancing around that. But going forward, I think that this operator is respectful of the city's laws. They are intending to operate this as a restaurant. And as Mr. Elias, you pointed out, I think they just got a little carried away on their very first evening of operations. And we'll point out there were several neighbors from the Cosmopolitan that were personally invited to the grand opening. They were there. Many neighbors were there enjoying it, and it did cease at 11:00 PM. So after 11:00 PM, it stopped. That's the only time they're ever going to have this happen.
Anyone in the chamber to speak on this? Anyone on Zoom?
There is nobody on Zoom with their hand raised.
All right, closed public hearing. All right, I'm going to start again. I must be in a good mood, but. No, no, no. Listen, I know how much money they put into it. I actually went over there to see it. It's beautiful. It's a great addition. I think it's a little early to have a revocation hearing. My recommendation would be to two months, assuming it's a one-off. You know, I know, I know Keith lives south of Fifth, and we do need to adhere to the rules there. No, no, it, obviously, it was a mistake. I get it. If it was opening night, even though it's wrong, it happens. But, you know, in light of the investment made there, I would hate to have a revocation hearing at this stage, since they've only been open a month. But I think it, are you the owner?
This is the general manager.
Okay, can you step up one sec? And again, they're going to have their own opinions, but yeah, it's just, you can't blatantly disregard a COP like that. But I want you to succeed. I know how much money and efforts were put into that. So you got to make sure that you understand the COP, educate and educate the staff on that. Okay, because we want you to do well. Okay, all right. That's my comments. Any, we'll start with Keith.
Well, goes without saying that you went in front of the neighborhood board, and in case they don't understand no music and what ambient outside means, perhaps they could talk to catch. I still think that the speakers, and this is just my personal opinion, they could do better. When I was there on the 14th at night, I thought it was a little loud. You know, I thought, personally, I thought it was loud for the people that were sitting there, but that's up to the general manager. But ambient is in the ear of the beholder, and I don't think that when I was there, I was hearing the lower end of ambient, casual, nice French music that would put you in a mood to eat. And so I would just be careful about that.
Appreciate that, Keith. And so you know, we have deactivated, I think, two or three speakers in the, in the front area that we were noticing it was maybe getting a little loud.
It's a little loud up front.
Have been deactivated in response to, you know, this is the normalization period. They've been open about a month.
I would suggest if the board is going to continue the application, if we get to that point, that we include a condition, that staff go out there, and we set the, the level of music so we can confirm what that volume would be.
I agree.
They are using a limiter as required by their COP, so they're using that.
The decimal, six, is it 70 or 65?
Do you know what the decimal meter is set at? We can bring that back in. Uh, do you know what the decimal meter is set at? We can bring that back in the progress report to make sure what the levels set at.
I'd like to see the measure.
Thanks, Keith.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I do think, um, you know, we should, we could wait. It's a new operation. We should wait. Um, I have a feeling the city's gonna go out there and tell them where they need to set the, the volume. I think there are also a lot of people in that neighborhood that are obviously from the, well, they're, you know, calls that were made that are gonna be keeping an eye on the place. So they go a few months and, and not have any violations. It's, it's gonna show you, you're, you are trying. So, yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of just continuing it for two months.
I, I might wanna do it a little bit more than two months. I mean, one of my concerns, I guess, is as the summer months come, traffic slows down a bit and, you know, we see restaurants and nightclubs pushing the limits a little bit more. You know, to bring in clientele and bring in customers. And so I guess that's a concern of mine. I'm, I'd say maybe ninety days, bring you guys back instead of sixty days. Obviously, if there is a violation, you'll be back sooner than that. But I'm in favor of, uh, and I think it's a good idea to, to make sure we're calibrating the decimal, the decibel, uh, level, you know, one thing, I guess it, it's, it, it's sort of at odds to me that they have ambient music and then when code compliance goes, they're determining whether the music is quote unquote excessively loud.
Right.
And so.
It's not, it's not excessively loud. It's, is it above normal conversation?
Well, so then, then code needs to be educated on that because in these reports from, that are included in your staff reports are, it says, you know, it would, one of them says it was not, um, it was not, uh, unreasonably loud or it was not loud nor excessive. But one of them said the music was not, not excessively loud.
I, I agree. I think, um, we should have a meeting with planning staff and code compliance onsite to establish what that level is.
Right, okay. But, but other than that, you know, I, I've been there. It's a great establishment. I hope you guys succeed. I think it's an excellent addition to the neighborhood and, and, um, looking forward to years of success there. Thank you.
I mean, I, I agree with Jonathan. I would probably schedule, uh, where I would, you know, continue this. You were saying, what, ninety days? So I don't know. Yeah, I think that, that makes most sense. See how you all operate. I would just say, you know, the one thing is it seems like whenever code gets there, they're unable to actually make contact with anyone. So maybe just having something set in place where if code does come out, there's a way to kind of get a hold of someone a little bit quicker and more efficiently.
Okay, I think those notes are for the, the complainant is refusing to cooperate with code.
Oh, just.
But our managers have, have been in contact with code every time that they've been there and cooperated. Um, I think in, to Jonathan's point, I think there's even one of these notes where they say that they go to the vantage point of the complainant, the residential building next door, and they can't hear any music. That's the standard in our CUP. It's, you cannot impact the residential building next door and we're complying with it, so.
I got a question. Do we know if the complaints, there are just four complaints where, where the complainant was not willing to meet? Is it all from the same person or same building?
I won't know without, um, asking code compliance. I could have them come, when we, we have this continued, I'll have code compliance come back and they can respond to any direct questions regarding those complaints as well as any future complaints.
All right.
I'm, I'm just curious generally, are, are complainants have to disclose now, right?
Yes, you have, they have to disclose their.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, I'm on board with, uh, with my colleagues here. I think that there's no need to be coming back too soon. I think you guys have, um, there's a little bit of a learning curve and we maybe push the limits here, but, uh, I'm sure you guys wanna watch this succeed and you don't want any modifications on your CUP, so I'm pretty certain that you guys will be following the rules.
Elizabeth?
I'd just like to say that it's supposed to be conversational. And obviously that's not, but again, I'd, I'd agree with all of you. I'd like to know, does code have, um, noise meters?
No, because that, that's not the standard.
But is there some way that we can set a standard that, because for instance, you know, there are so many other places.
The, the issue with the meter is that if you're out there and a loud car drives by, that will affect the meter too. So the meter doesn't, doesn't distinguish where the, the sound is coming from. That's what a, a person can distinguish, where is the sound coming from and is it above conversational level?
Conversational, it's conversational. But, okay, thanks.
All right, so wanna move it to June? Jonathan? So moved?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Unposed? All right, good luck. We'll see you in a few months.
Thank you all very much.
All right. Okay, previously continued applications, Planning Board File twenty four oh seven one nine thirteen fifteen Collins Avenue.
So keeping along with the lines of entertainment, um, this, this application, which begins on the staff reports, began on page forty seven of the board packages. This is PB twenty four zero seven one nine for thirteen fifty Collins Avenue. So this application is only before you, not for NIE, but for a CUP for, um, outdoor entertainment. This application initially was, um, before you on January seventh and was continued at the request of the applicant to the February meeting. And on February fourth, the application was also continued to, to, to today's meeting in order for the applicant to perform additional, um, sound tests. And I'll go over those, um, results that, um, planning staff also participated in as part of our, um, our report and recommendation. So the applicant is proposing outdoor entertainment as part of a new restaurant on this historic site. This would, as proposed, consist of either a DJ or live music. And the hours and days proposed are Fridays from seven PM to eleven PM, Saturdays from noon to four PM and from seven PM to eleven PM, and Sundays from eleven thirty AM, um, to six PM. Now, as noted in our staff report, this property is relatively narrow, only fifty feet wide, in close proximity to other, um, residential and hotel projects. Most notably, the, um, the closely, the most closely affected properties are the, um, the Shepley Hotel on the south side and Commodore, um, Hotel, which is in the process of being converted to, um, I believe apartments in the future on the north side. Now, staff did go out there as part of the sound test and participated in that and found that at an ambient level, the sound was not readily apparent in the, in the adjacent, um, hotel rooms. Playing it at ambient background music, which is what the level of, of the code allows without requiring the CUP. The applicant is here before you because they're asking to have, um, entertainment above ambient level. Now, once, as part of the sound test, the sound was turned up to above ambient level, you could clearly hear that music, um, within the hotel rooms of the adjacent buildings, even with the, um, air conditioning going, in the case of the, of the Shepley, um, Hotel to the, to the south. So based upon, um, the site conditions and staff's experience with the sound study, we're recommending that at this time, the only, um, um, provisions that the, that the planning board approve as part of the CUP is, um, possibly having a DJ with ambient level music only on Saturdays and Sundays between twelve and four PM. At other times, they could have ambient background music, no DJ, but they'd be limited to having a DJ twelve to four, Saturdays and Sundays at an ambient background level, not to interfere with normal conversation. That's our recommendation. I'll turn it over to, um, the applicant, Mr. De La Fuente, for his presentation.
Thank you, Michael. Good morning. Bob De La Fuente on behalf of the applicant, law offices at twelve hundred Brickell Avenue. With me today is ownership represented by Mustafa Urquur, as well as, um, uh, Jamil Dib, who's also a restaurant operator who you may well know. He also operates Mercado Pesqueria, Paperfish and Bar Seco. Also with us is Brooks Acoustics, Bennett Brooks and Dennis Swatkin. We've been working with them extensively because, as Michael mentioned, we do understand the constraints of this site. We have, um, uh, hotels on both sides and we have a narrow lot. And we were very careful from the beginning to try to accommodate all of these issues that Michael has outlined. So we have had extensive meetings, um, with staff and extensive meetings with the neighbors. We actually conducted first a Zoom meeting where we sent out an invitation to everyone who was receiving, um, the notice of this application. And then we also followed that up with another onsite meeting the next day, you know, as you are well aware, those are not necessarily well attended. So for the Zoom meeting, we had one person attend, actually from Texas. Um, and we heard no complaints from him. He's seasonal and, um, you know, lives on, I guess, on Ocean Drive. But, uh, he seemed okay with the application and we, we received no other objections from him. So obviously we had the most connections and the most contact with the Shepley Hotel and, um, he is here today also. So we've met with his staff several times and again with him just now. Sorry, that's why I was running in. And we also met with a Commodore, which is just next door, and we met most recently with a Commodore last week. And that meeting actually went well and they, they expressed no objections to our proposed original hours. So, um, what we have now, I originally thought we were gonna be able to, um, agree to what the staff recommendation was. But then I just learned now that the operational plan is a little bit different. Michael's recommendation would have been okay had we been planning on doing brunch for the first five months, but we are not. So, um, our request would be to forget the brunch and allow us to do ambient level only with a DJ, but ambient level only, for dinners on Fridays from seven PM to eleven PM.
Just to direct us to the provision you're talking about.
Uh, the, our operational hours?
In the CUP that, that, that Michael, that you would have been okay with, but you're not, since you're not doing brunch.
Oh, right. No, Michael had, uh, recommended, um, DJ ambient level only on Saturdays and Sundays from twelve to four.
Oh.
Right, so we don't need.
That's on pages, that's on page fifty seven of the board packages.
Yeah, I see.
Underconditioned, um, D.
D, right?
Yeah.
So, um.
But you, what you're saying is you're modifying what the original request was, which was two AM, right? So you guys are now asking for eleven?
That was our original, original request and that was subsequently modified actually prior to February to be only until eleven PM. Because, you know, we've been continuing this dialogue as we've been going along and listening to the issues. So then we've reduced them and then we've reduced them again. And then now we're back to, now we're only at Fridays and Saturdays from seven to eleven PM. And the proposal would be to allow us to do that for now. And then this would be subject to further testing, of course, because we, you know, our sound engineer is here. We just spoke with our neighbor and we said we are obviously, obviously willing to further adjust and further adjust. We already have further, there's a courtyard that you'll see in the plans that is the main source of concern for him because it, that's where it's open to his building. And, uh, we already have solutions on how to further limit the sound that's coming from those speakers while keeping it a, a little bit louder on the interior part of the courtyard where he's not exposed. So we are, we'd have to come back in ninety days for a progress report anyway, so we would request that you allow us to operate with those limited hours and then see how we are at the ninety days. And then I'm hopeful that at that point we could add more because brunch will be coming then. And if it's not good, then it is what it is, then you, we deal with it that way. But that would be.
And his hotel is the closest direct chamber?
He is the Shepley Hotel, yes. So we have two. We have the Shepley and the Commodore on either side. The Commodore was okay with our plan. Um, he has different concerns and that's fair and we're here to try to address his concerns. So that would be our request. So, um, you know, uh, so Bennett is here. He can explain to you, um, how we did our testing. And what further measures can be taken, obviously before we're operational and before we get our certificate of use. Michael would come back out for that ca, sound calibration to make sure the city's okay with whatever this board orders. And we'd also have code compliance probably present also so that everyone's on the same page, so there's not different. Like the moving goalpost for us, it's easier for everybody.
I, I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
So if you had no intention of being a bar, um, why are you asking for a DJ? And also, uh, you've already had one violation and you haven't even opened. That was four speakers mounted on the outside of the building that are facing Collins. And I have a, I mean, I've got an issue with that.
Yeah, and, um, I apologize on behalf of the client for that. That was a premature installation. Obviously, there was no, it's not approved yet.
There was nobody monitoring who's installing the speakers.
Yeah, so, and as far as the, the sound violation, my understanding was it was from one of the workers with a radio. It wasn't through our system.
It's not the sound violation I have a problem with. It's the problem is the speakers being mounted on the outside of the building facing Collins.
I think it's, I don't agree, um, I think what we recommend is they install speakers that were lower to the ground along Collins and not something that was on the building.
I don't think we should have anything on Collins at all.
Understood. And that's certainly something that, you know, if that's the board's order, then we can accommodate that. But the idea with the outside speakers was never to be above ambient level anyway. That's the plan because, you know, we're not sharing the party with Collins Avenue. You may have seen in the package that this is a, another addition, a good addition, we believe, to Collins Avenue. This is gonna be a very high end restaurant. There are six suites that are part of this, a thousand dollars a night. I believe you saw the photos. I don't know if you can bring them up. It was part of our.
But the suites are not my issue. The suites are, we're not here for, for beds, you know, heads and beds. We're here for noise.
No, absolutely. But the suites are sort of part and parcel of that because we don't wanna, you know, these are our guests that are gonna be paying a thousand dollars a night. They are not gonna wanna be disturbed either. So the idea is that this is an elevated sort of property and the hotel, the restaurant is part of that. So, and I do have, let me, um, ask, um, uh, Jamil to come up and address, um, your question. As long as he's here, he can address that.
Hi, everyone. Uh, look, this is a.
You are who? I'm sorry.
Jamil Dib.
Right, what's your role?
Co-founder of BE, owner of this property with Nakash Group. And, uh, look, we're part of every board of Lincoln Road, Ocean Drive, Espanola Way. And we're against the noise. We're against the hawking. We're against the two four one. Everybody knows us. We're restaurateurs. We're not bar nightclub people. Now, the, the, the restaurant world is being changing constantly. So now you wanna have a nice dinner and maybe some kind of entertainment. We have, as, as Bob said, six suites of a thousand dollars a night, super chef from Napoli, super kitchen. You guys should go and visit. It's gonna be like an incredible add to Miami Beach. It was like abandoned. We invest a lot of money and we don't have plans to have like loud music because we're gonna affect ourselves. It's gonna be super ambient music and, um, maybe it's gonna be the most romantic place in Miami. Nothing about party, nothing. First violation about party, we shut it down. And I would not call it DJ. I would call it music programmer. So the idea was to have very light, we have the playlist. It's very chill, very nice. And then maybe, maybe the violin was a bad idea. We're not gonna affect them. If we affect any hotel, we just remove it immediately. We don't wanna. We're, we're not here to lose time. No, we, we invest a lot of money. We're trying just to make as best as we can. But that's it. We're not planning to make noise like this. We hate the noise of Collins Avenue. We hate the noise of Ocean Drive. We, we just hate it. If we can remove the speakers everywhere, it would be the most amazing, uh, like news. But like across the street, we have a place that maybe the noise, it's gonna be three times more than us now. So we, we're not about the noise. We're about the experience. So that's what we're trying to do. I, I add a little bit more. Miami is getting, uh, every time more like competed from all over the planet, places everywhere. It's not easy. Now, it's not anymore just about the food, about the service, it's atmosphere. It's a lot of things. So we're just trying. No, I hope you comprehend. But that's it.
The DJ, is he gonna be outside or inside?
Look, we have a, a, like a inside patio and it's gonna be, uh, like in the interior, but outside. And we have all the technology available to work with our neighbor as we work with, we want twenty restaurants in Miami Beach. And we're known because we work for, with, with our neighbors. We can, maybe it was a little bit loud. Maybe we can put it lower, lower, lower. They can have my personal contact as, uh, in News Cafe. News Cafe, we have an office on top of us and we work with them.
I know you're in the MXC, but in other areas, we've been encouraging, uh, noise limiters so that there is no way it could go above sixty five or seventy, whatever we decide.
We're fine.
Do you have that in the proposal now?
Yeah, we, we, we have that. We have that and we have a sound limiter. And, and that, 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 the noise controller, the noise, uh, in Spanish, desibel metro.
Yeah, I don't know Spanish.
Next to his property.
Because when you think of DJ, maybe that's the wrong term. I mean, it, it's an oxymoron to say DJ and ambient because you're thinking bass and bass is the most travels, the farthest. In fact, I, I know living next to Nicky's Beach that you could be next to it and you're not hearing the treble. But if you walk two hundred yards away, you're hearing the bass going boom, 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 boom. So I just, you gotta have the, the whole spectrum.
Immediately, we can fix it from our phone, from wherever we are. Look, we're not planning to make money and have a fight with the naked. We don't want that.
I know.
We, we remove just speakers and we remove the music programmer and we focus on the, on the food, you know? We're just trying, but we're not gonna have like, we don't have time to, to have a fight with. And he's a hotelier. He deserves respect.
We're gonna let him speak, but to Keith's point, so I've always thought it was weird that you could have a stereo without a DJ. But yet if you put a DJ there with the exact same volume, you can't. I find that ridiculous. But to his point, I think the perception is that when you have a DJ, he gets out of control and the bass starts coming. So I, I agree with his, his recommendation. I don't, I don't care if you have a DJ. To me, it's about the noise that it's making. But anyway, let's, let's go on with the hearing and, and are you, are you all finished with your presentation?
Just, just to add to that, um, there is a locked system. The only people who can change the settings are gonna be the manager and the sound engineer. So that, there's protection that way. And whatever level it is, I'll just, um, say that when we initial, when we did these tests last Thursday, our sound engineer, Bennett, based that on a prior project where, you know, I know that the code doesn't go by numbers, right? But the numbers that we used for this test were numbers that worked for a project in Ocean Drive. And when we were there, there was. And when we were there with Michael, then we learned that those numbers for another project that was more recently approved had been lowered. And so those are not the numbers we used, but we can use those numbers, right? So we're, there's absolute flexibility here. Like you said, we also don't understand if the noise level is a noise level DJ or not. But, you know, unfortunately, under the, with the way the code is, once there's a DJ, it makes it something a little bit different.
Right. Alright, so let's hear his, I want to hear from him and then, and after we hear his concerns and maybe your sound guy can, can.
Perfect. Yep. Thank you.
You want to speak? Thanks.
And, and I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to first ask the board if anyone has any disclosures to make regarding this application.
So Keith, whenever there's an application like this, if you met with or, or communicated.
No one. I can just say, this whole book, talk to no one.
Okay. Keith, Scott, okay, any other, any disclosures to make by anybody?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just introduce yourself with your address.
Yes, my name is Juan Pablo Donofrio. So I'm the owner of the Shepley Hotel, the neighbor to the south of the restaurant applicant. I, I did send a letter a couple of days ago where I do think I expressed my, my concerns with the, with the sound level of the project. And we're very happy to have the property next to us being redeveloped. And I understand entrepreneurship and I'm, I'm glad that something is going to be done. We've seen five or six concepts next door throughout this last twenty years. And it's glad that, that something is coming there. We did the tests last week and, and again, we run a hotel. When you are in your hotel room, you have the expectation of silence and that's natural. And we as hoteliers, we want to be the ones that control the experience of our guests. We don't want the experience of our guests being controlled from outside the hotel. The same way that they wouldn't want the experience of their client to be controlled from the hotel. And I think that's a basic rule. We sometimes get stuck with the concept of the ambience, ambience plus, ambience, but not so ambience. For us, it's very clear. If I can listen to your music from within the room, that's not good to us. And that's not good because we live in a time where our guests will have an immediate impact by expressing. I can see the review already expressing, make sure that you're not assigned to the rooms that are facing the, the south, the north part. And this is an immediate thing. I, I, I also own the Leslie Hotel at Ocean Drive. I've been dealing with music and restaurant operators for more than twenty years. One thing is what goes onto the books. One thing is what happens on a day by day basis. The limits that we put to the systems are very easily override. And, and somehow, when somebody operating believes that volume makes a better impression to their clients, nobody will hesitate to do so. I can call code compliance, it's too late. By the time I have five reviews on a weekend expressing that it's too loud, we're done. We don't have a second choice. Once that's out there and it's an Expedia Travel, OCD, TripAdvisor and Booking.com, everybody agreeing with the same problem, we're done. It takes you twenty years to build something and it takes you five reviews on a row to destroy. So that's exactly why.
Right. So we all understand. We all agree with that.
And our rule is simple.
Right.
If we can listen to the music inside the room, we're not good for that. And that's why we tried. We did the tests. We did four different scenarios.
And what happened?
And only the ambient music scenario was barely listened to from within the room. Every other scenario where there was a violinist, and this is a restaurant that is closed, no people chatting and no music on top of that. So that's the best case scenario. It was still very audible within the room with the doors, with the high impact glass windows closed. If we can keep the noise to the ambience level that is not audible from the hotel's place, I don't even think that we have the right to say something about it. Because if it's not audible from the hotel, what can I say? So the specs of how that gets written into a, into a norm, it's a little bit more tricky. But, but the expectation that we have is very clear. We do not want to control the, we want to control the experience of our guests ourselves. We don't want this to be controlled.
So you just want to make sure no one in a hotel room hears anything, bottom line.
It has to be silent for the hotel room. Unfortunately, this faces an outdoor patio. There used to be a swimming pool there. It was the swimming pool of a house and now there's no more swimming pool and it's a beautiful area. And it's a very, very, we have a five foot setback and yeah.
Just to clarify on your comments now. So you're saying just as is right now, you can barely or sometimes hear some noise in the room. So this is without a restaurant. So forget the music, obviously. You're, you're saying that even with the restaurant, you're at risk to hearing noise. Which, you know, just, just, just to review what we're doing today. I think the, the main conversation is going to be around the entertainment, right? And so we don't, you know, likely this is going to be a restaurant next to you. So I'm just raising that you may be exposed to noise in these rooms based on what you're saying either way.
We, we will be exposed no matter what to the normal conversational level of a restaurant that is almost there. So that's inevitable. Usually, music enhances that amount of, of, of noise. The only tools that we had so far is just playing the music and testing from within. Michael came with his tester. We did four different scenarios. And so we, we grabbed that information, which is what we have so far.
So your ask is basically to make sure that the, you're not against the concept of having the ambient, the ambient music and entertainment. You just want to make sure that we're respecting the ambient.
I, I, again, I, I want to make sure that there's no influence of the music inside my room. As per what Michael tested, when the ambience music was on, there's no people, there's no crowd, it's only the music. It was not audible from inside the room. Every other scenario was.
Okay. So you would, just to clarify that we're understanding you, you would be comfortable with ambient music as long as it's monitored and make sure that we know.
Michael, what were the, excuse me one second. What were the other, other than ambient? What were the other?
They raised the level above ambient.
Right.
And then it was plainly audible on the inside, even with the air conditioner running.
Alright, so the bottom line, it's gotta be ambient.
Exactly. That's, that's, that's what Juan Pablo's recommending, anything.
And then there was a mix of ambience and there was a intendedly like a ambience music violinist. I don't know how that starts working out with a combination of, it was no, not ambience anymore. So it's, it's a very tricky, but I don't think there's another way than just test it, testing what's allowed or no. Of course, I'm afraid that whatever you test makes sense on paper. And what happens on a day by day basis, six months from now, and, and I run a restaurant block from there.
You mean that they won't adhere to the, to the ambient? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it's, it's, yes. It's, it's, unfortunately, this is very sensitive for the hotel. Because we have very small reaction capacity when things happen. So you might go above that level. We call you, you correct it. We're already on, on, on dark water. It's not like we can tell the guests, come back next week and you'll figure out that now we're gonna be doing better. And that's why it's so sensitive for us.
Thank you for coming in here. Is there anyone on Zoom?
There's nobody on Zoom with their hands.
Is anybody else in chambers to speak on this? Alright, so we'll close the public hearing. Do you want to have your noise? Obviously, you know.
Yes, sir. Yes.
You heard what he had to say, so.
Yeah, and we've, we've been having this dialogue and yes, and Dennis would, would like to talk to you. I'm sorry. Bennett would. Just a couple of things, you know, so ambient does not mean it's gonna be silent next door. Especially with this, you know, with this confined site. So it can be ambient on our, and it could still be heard. So that's the, and like everyone said, you know, we can have ambient music, right? It's the DJ that's the issue. And, and I think Bennett will explain to you how the sound system, it can be locked and I'll let him go through that.
Yeah, and, and one of the questions I have, to me, if you have music where it doesn't disrupt conversation at your table, I don't know how they hear it in a hotel room next door. So that doesn't make sense to me. So I'd love to hear that.
Yes, of course.
Because isn't the definition of ambient in the code that you can't hear it disruptive, Nick?
The definition of ambient is that at a volume level that does not interfere with normal conversation.
At that venue?
Right.
Okay. So I don't know how a hotel room would hear that next door, but go ahead.
Good morning. Good morning. For the record, I'm Bennett Brooks of Brooks Acoustics, Pompano Beach, Florida. And we were fortunate and delighted to work on this project. It's a beautiful project. I'm sure you've seen the renderings and the pictures and maybe you've been there to visit. Michael Beluche was very kind to come and help us in the commissioning process.
This is not to interrupt you, but for the board, this is what was left on the desk. So if you, alright, go ahead.
So there's, yeah, you've probably seen all the renderings. At any rate, the discussion is centering around what's going to be audible in the neighboring properties. And that's very correct. That's very right. And that's, our goal is to make sure that we're a good neighbor. This project, as you, as you've been told, is very high end. It has to, you know, meet the expectations of its own clientele. And that's probably even more strict than I would think the neighbors. But that being said, yes, everything that has been installed is under control. And when I, I say that, I mean, it's, it's hardwired and it's software driven, it's password protected. The, all of the equipment is locked in cases and, and racks. As, you know, we've done here in Miami Beach for a long time now, everything, that's basically the idea. Most of the conditions.
Right, but when you say it's locked, was it locked when they did the testing at a level where you could not hear it in the hotel next door?
Yeah, in, for, yes, for the ambient, as you heard, that's, couldn't really hear it in, in the rooms, even shutting down the AC.
You can lock the volume, so that's it?
Everything's locked. I mean, it's, it's run, it's run from a tablet for the, from the phone, everything's.
And a DJ can't alter that?
DJ can't touch it. So the, there's a max. We had, you know, the source, which would be the DJ, is up to, you know, they can put on the max and the driving of the speakers through the amplifiers and all the electronics, that's, that's locked. That can't be touched. And, you know, to your point, it doesn't really matter. We won't, you know, call them a music programmer because you can set the, you can set the program up to play the songs all night without anybody there. But basically, the music programmer is there to, you know, be personable with the, with the guests. So that's, that's the, that's the only difference with that person being there. But to go into the detail of it, you know, physically, everything is locked. There's racks of amplifiers. They are all software controlled. And then the program material is all software controlled. So the settings for each and every loudspeaker that's installed there is software controlled and set and locked. And only management has that. So no entertainers can mess with it. And if they try, I'm sure that will be their last visit. But, so, you know, you can rest assured that whatever it's set at will be the maximum under all the conditions that you, that you require. So that, that's what we want to do. And so that's why we had the commissioning exercise last week to go through and set it up based on the ambient being, you know, conversational level. And so, yes, there, there are going to be conversations. That's physical, that's people. As far as the electronics, that's set to enhance that and make that a good experience. That's not there to compete with the people. So I, you know, I can go into the details. Yes, I was just getting to that. Thank you.
And Michael, the CUP, you're comfortable is, is, is codified to be consistent with the testing you, you observed yourself? Okay.
Correct. Yes, so, so Michael was there and we're planning further requirements based on, Michael had a great suggestion because there's some speakers in the, there's an open courtyard area. And then there are two long buildings that basically shield the neighbors from what's going on. And that's where there's dining in there and there's a small bar in there just to service it. And so, so the open courtyard where the swimming pool was, that's visible from the, the second floor of the neighbors. And that's what you're looking over. So there were, there's a, a set of speakers out there that can be individually controlled. So it doesn't have to be like a, you know, a group of, you know, this block, this block, this block. Each one is individually controlled and we're in, now in the process, we're working to let, lower the decibel level of that, of the courtyard individually. Once that's locked, that'll be part of the complete scene that, that they run. So the ambient scene will be locked with the courtyard reduced. And that should make it even less audible.
Well, what happens when you have the outdoor speakers at, at the locked level, but indoors, you have it above ambient level and the doors are all open and the sound travels outside from indoors? And then that combines with the outdoor ambient level?
Well, that's, that's a good question. Well, every, the whole system, the whole set is locked to meet that property line requirement.
Well, but I'm saying, have you tested, because, because what you're, you wrote in the operational plan, not you, but they wrote in the operational plan that on certain occasions, the music is proposed to be above ambient levels in the restaurant. But the sound system will be designed to prevent disturbing neighbors.
I think Jonathan, I think since that time, they revised the proposal. They're no longer proposing to have above ambient level.
Inside, okay.
That, that would address that concern.
Right, right. That, that's exactly right. At this, at this meeting, we're, we're planning to stick with the, the recommendations. I think the staff recommendations as they were just agreed to or modified.
You're asking for different hours. They're asking for seven PM to eleven PM versus our recommendation, which was twelve to four.
Right. So the hours, hours are a bit different, but the system itself, physically, electronically, everything will be locked down. And, and we're in the process of reducing the courtyard itself, that area. So that it's, it's gonna be less than it was one last week. So that will make it even more conducive, I think, to, for the satisfaction.
What do you mean, the courtyard's getting smaller?
No, no, no. The loudspeakers are coming down.
Okay, got it.
Reduced because that's, that's where the hotel windows look on to.
Right. So for, for example, that in no time would it be above, you know, background conversation level, but within the courtyard, it'll be even lower than that.
That's the idea.
You have thirty nine speakers, thirty nine, and.
I think part, part of the thing too is having more speakers that have the, the volume smaller is better than having a fewer, larger speakers that have to project the volume further.
The point is still the same. You have six subwoofers, you have thirty nine speakers, six lights, a DJ booth. This is a bar.
I'm sorry?
This is a bar. This is not a high end hotel restaurant. This is, this is, even if you're renting a thousand dollars a night, you've got thirty nine speakers, four facing Collins, six subwoofers, you've got a DJ booth, you've got all kinds of main racks and everything else. I, I used to date guys in bands a long time ago, so I kind of know how it works. So may I ask if, this is a very small hotel. What, 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 why so many speakers and lights and, and all that? I'm just trying to, you know, understand that. That's.
Yeah, sure. That's, that's a great question.
Why would we have agreed to twelve to four on Saturdays and Sundays and no entertainment on Fridays nor after four on Saturdays and Sundays? And now we're coming back with this. I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to understand.
Well, the, the physical layout that you pointed out is a good question. The more smaller speakers you have, the more even the coverage and the less each speaker puts out. So basically, you set it up so that, so that the clients, the customers will, you know, get an even coverage. You know, in the old days with the bands, all the speakers were up front and by the stage or wherever they were. So, so that, they had to, you know.
It wasn't that long ago.
Yeah, well, I mean, they didn't really do surround sound and, you know, maybe some of the bigger venues do. But, you know, if they wanted to reach the back, they had to make it quite loud in the front. So this kind of system avoids that issue because it's even all over the place with a lot of small speakers. And you see a lot of speakers, you say, well, okay, that's just basically to keep it lower, believe it or not. It's, it's maybe counterintuitive, but, but what happens is you're not cranking up one speaker because you have a dead. you're not cranking up one speaker because you have a dead spot over there.
And you could reduce the number of speakers you have because you still have those four that are facing Collins Avenue. And I did notice that you had something, I don't know where it is right now, but you had something about them projecting onto Collins. I'm just trying to.
Sure. We'll remove the speakers on Collins.
Well, I think they were just removed. I, I mean, off the front of the building. And what about inside? Because, I mean, look, I'm trying to understand this gentleman's, one, is it, you know, our concern is the neighbors and, and like he was saying, if you have a hotel, and, and I understand you're renting on Collins Avenue, but if, I don't want to, I don't, that ruins his, his experience for his customers. You know, you're getting something at the expense of him and the other people around. I, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, and to, to her point, I mean, it's not that complicated to me. I mean, but he's right that if there's one bad experience and they write a review and, so the bottom line is we'd love to give you what you want, but you just got to commit that he's not going to hear it. I don't think it's complicated.
Right, I agree with you. And to your question about the number of speakers, I mean, my understanding has always been exactly what Bennett is saying, is that the distributive sound system, which is what we have, which is more speakers, is actually more conducive to be able.
How many, I, I, I'm, I'm going to just say, I'm going to disagree, but I would like to know how large those speakers are that are inside. Yeah, that's, that's thirty-nine of those is pretty heavy.
Well, it's like a little bookshelf speaker. The idea is to, you know, to make it, it's, it's a distributed system and the distributed systems are always.
About that size and it's pretty loud.
But I think, I think, I mean, I understand your, your concerns, Elizabeth, but I think we're not the sound experts.
Right.
And, and I think at the end of the day, what we want is the outcome, we're all agreeing on the outcome that we need to have and how we get there is not for us to figure out.
But it's, but it is about their CUP and that is noise.
No, it's a good question. It's a fair question, absolutely. And, you know, the idea is that technology is available to us to, the other thing is because we're not worried about the architecture affecting the sound. We can just control it with each little speaker. If we want to drop it down here, we can do that. So, you know, we don't need to, you know, if you only have three speakers or four or five, whatever the number, then you have to, you know, work with the architecture because basically you'll have, some people will hear it in the, the front of the restaurant and they won't hear it in the back. This way, it's even coverage and it's controllable. It's all software controllable. We, we were walking around with a, with a pad and controlling it from there. Like, is this okay? Is this okay? And that's the way it's done.
There was no restaurant there. There was no restaurant. There were no hotel guests. There were no patrons talking, you know, there was none of that.
That's, that's true. But, you know, the music is at conversational level. So I would think inside the restaurant and at the, at the property line, you're going to hear about the same level as you would, whether it's full or not, because the people will be there at conversational level. Yes, you get, you get people talking. Someone's going to laugh. Someone's going to, you know, do something like that. But normal conversation is, is, that's what the system's designed for, to enhance that, make it a great experience. They want people to, to be there and not, you know, it's not a party, party scene.
Keith, Keith, go ahead.
Yeah, you, you had me until I heard six subwoofers. When I, and that gets back to the, my first question, DJs. DJs go at, what is it? I'm not an expert, but thirty to a hundred megahertz. It's very low and it travels and it can rattle windows at an ambient level because we've experienced this before. So why subs, why subwoofers? That, that you, when, there is no reason if you're going to have fine dining and music to have a subwoofer. That was created by DJs. It was created by discos. And no one needs sound below twenty thousand megahertz. Why are you doing it at a subwoofer level?
Well, because the little speakers that are distributed to keep the sound level down without the subs to fill in that, that lower frequency range.
You don't need anything below twenty. My radio, my, it's not standard ambient music between twenty thousand megahertz up. And aren't subwoofers down in the range where windows rattle?
Well, yeah, if you play them loud enough. Now, I mean, if you want the, you know, I'm the guy that moved Ultra the first time. They brought it back.
That's a bad one.
So I, I'm, I'm pretty familiar with the, the concept. But the idea here is that, you know, the little speakers will sound tinny if they don't have that support. So they're, they're spread around. That's why there's six of them because they're not all in the same spot like they're on stage projecting out. They're, you know, it's kind of sprinkled around. You think, think of it as, I don't know, a little bit of, I'm just trying to come up with an analogy, a little bit of spice or herbs. You don't put it all in the middle of the dish. You kind of spread it around so the flavor goes around. And those are all, every, every electronic thing in that building is limited. So if there's ever any issue with subwoofers, loudspeakers, however many they are, other than physically removing them, they can be turned to zero at any time. So that's, you know, that's, the issue is, is it going to be controlled properly? Because there's an absolute control over everything. So.
But subwoofers at a low megahertz level do travel differently than the normal sound.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. We don't, we don't.
And they do rattle.
Well, we don't want to hear that next door either.
And they do pick up the bouncing off and echoing magnification of walls.
That's why there's, that's why there's a bunch of them and they're strategically located and they're all controlled because we don't want our neighbor to hear that.
Okay.
We don't want them to hear it. They'll have to come to the restaurant if they want to hear it. Okay. I hope that answered that question and, and any others that you might have. Just remember, control, control, control. That's the, that's the, that's the whole idea so that we can be a good neighbor. Anything else?
I'm going to jump in. You know, I don't, we see so many different, different applications here and, and, and I think the same way on a lot, on all of them. It's, I don't really care what happens inside a property, but when, when what happens inside affects outside, then it becomes an issue. You know, as far as I'm concerned, you can have old concerts in there. If he can't hear it, I don't think he, don't think he would care and I don't think we would care. But, you know, on Collins Avenue where you're located, you know, the, the building, all the buildings are close together, five foot setbacks. And I think it's, it's next to impossible to, to do what you're proposing and not affect the neighbors. I, you know, there's, you talk about locking the sound system, only some people have control. I've said this before here, we hear that from every applicant, but all it takes is someone to turn a dial and the volume goes up, whether it's a manager, the DJ or whoever. That's all it takes. You know, we do sound studies and, 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 and it all looks good or sometimes looks good, but, you know, those could all be, you know, you could flush them down the toilet because all it takes is somebody to turn the volume up and, and there are problems.
Well, you're, you're right. You're absolutely right. I'm the technology guy and we can set it up so that it'll work absolutely fine. But the word is control. It's, it's part of management. And you had some earlier hearings this morning where there were some issues and, and that's the thing, ultimately you are in control. And then you dictate the terms and then we.
To a certain extent, you're right. And, and, and that's my concern. This is kind of more directed toward the board. I've been up here about a year and there's been a lot of cases like this and it just seems like it takes the board quite a long time to, to act when there's a violation. Maybe the board, maybe it's changed, you know, in the last year. Maybe we're, we're getting better at that. But, you know, to his point, you know, a couple of issues where somebody complains and then his business is, is in, in bad condition. So the problem, the issue was to not let it happen initially. Even with, even saying that, you know, and I don't know if we can do this. You said, the owner said that, you know, hey, if, if we can't make it work, we'll get rid of the speakers. We'll, we'll, we will get rid of the entertainment. I mean, the only thing I would propose that I, I may go along with and staff tell me if we can do this, could, could they get a sort of a probationary approval where, let's say it goes for two or three months? And after that time, the, it becomes null and void, but they would have to come back before. And if there are no violations, we can sort of approve it how we normally would.
I think we, we could do is like we have done before, have a scheduled progress report.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, no, I don't, we've done that before and then it comes back to us and we set it for a revocation hearing and they're good for a few months. Maybe a violation, maybe not. And then it's going to, we're, we're going to, we're going to dismiss it and then a few months go by and maybe, you know, there could be another violation. This is just what we see all the time.
So through the chair of, it's actually kind of what we proposed at the beginning was to allow us to operate with our proposed hours and with the reduced sound levels subject to staff's approval with the testing prior. And then at our, what would be the ninety day progress, we would keep this application open and continue it until.
The point is, when you, when, once we give it, it's, it's, it's hard for us to revoke it.
So let me clarify what you're saying. Because what I'm thinking in my mind is open up your restaurant, have people there, have your design, you know, however you're going to be having it, because that will change the way that the sound travels. And the amount of having fifty to a hundred people in the restaurant will change the way the sound travels. And once you're there, once you have it open, once everything's in the way, the tables are where they're supposed to be, the chairs are where they're supposed to be, then come back to us and prove to us that it won't be heard from the hotel rooms. Because the problem is, is the, the way that the whole system is set up, it, it's to the detriment of, I've said this before on the, on the panel. It's to the detriment of the neighbors, the residents, the hotel guests next door because you can, you know, you can, A, the, it's a, it's eleven o'clock at night, the neighbors are with their kids at home and they don't want to have to go open the door for a code compliance person. And, but they make the phone call. By the time the code compliance person gets over there, it's already, the music is down and, you know, it's just, and then there's no real violation. So then you never really come back and it's a cycle. And so what I think the better way to handle it is to do the due diligence ahead of time, set everything up as it is, you know, going to be. And then if you can make it work and, and your neighbors see, you show your neighbors that it will work without them hearing anything, then I think it's fine. But I mean, as, you know, in light of the, the complaint, the, the concerns of neighbors, in light of what I think is sort of the appetite of the Miami Beach community not to have more outdoor entertainment. I, to me, I don't, I don't have the appetite to allow outdoor entertainment without first being given a hundred percent assurances that it, that noise won't travel. And so that's how I feel. I mean, however you want to do it, if you want to continue this for, I don't know what.
I think, so let me ask you a question. I was out there. It looks like the place is almost ready to open up. When do you guys anticipate starting operations? Okay, so, so I would suggest, what Jonathan is suggesting is that you start operation now without having a DJ, having what the code allows, which is ambient background level music. And then after you started operation or during, during the operation, we will go out there and do the sound testing again during the, the dining and see how that, how that works. And continue this application for one to two months so that by the time you come back to the planning board, you have, you have started operation in accordance with not having the CUP, just what the code allows. And see if that allows you to operate in a respectable manner, doesn't, doesn't impact the neighbors. And then if the board wants to, then on top of that, add the DJ with that same level of ambient level, then the board would add that as part of the CUP.
With the noon to four, noon to four hours?
Well, no, this would be right. So right now, what the board would be doing is just considering continuing the application for one to two months. That would allow them to start operation.
They can operate in that interim?
No, they would be operating under, they'd be operating with ambient background music, what the code allows. So they would not be operating with the CUP. They don't need to because they're under two hundred.
Oh, got it. They don't need to. Got it, got it, got it.
We only need it for the DJ, right?
Would you like to do that for, so I would ask, would it continue to be for one month or two months? What would you guys?
Two months.
Two months. That would give them.
Because we may not open for three or four weeks, so it would be.
Well, if they open in three or four weeks, then they'd only be operating a month before they come back. Could we say two months after they open?
I agree.
Well, we have, we have to set a date certain today to keep the application.
I would say three months. Scott just saying, wait until two months after they open instead of today.
So three months.
We can say, let's say three months.
That would be June, that would be the June meeting, Michael.
Yeah, because right now I don't think, I don't think it's.
But we continue to the June tenth meeting. In the meantime, what we would do is of course monitor, find out when they open. I think after that, after the place is open, we would do sound testing again onsite with the restaurant operation and come back to the board in June with the outcome of that sound testing as well as any sort of complaints or updates on the operation.
And can we also put that all of the neighbors in the surrounding building are, are going to be, we, I just want to make sure that we're not.
Well, they, they are notified and we will put this in on the, we will.
You're sitting here, so you, you make sure you.
But there's, but there are other hotel, there are hoteliers that are closed.
No, I understand that, but apparently he's the most vulnerable. So.
I'm going to make a motion.
We will, we will include our notice. I think by the time we'll have our noticing on the, on the county website, so we will have that public notice.
The building north is, is, is not a hotel, so it's a condominium.
You're the most vulnerable.
It's a rental and I don't think anybody's paying real attention to the process. That's the truth. So I will.
Are you comfortable with what they're proposing right now?
I am. I, I, I don't have the right to stop them from opening and, and complain by, I guess, standard law.
Well, just so you understand, they don't need a CUP to open and operate at ambient music. So that's what they're going to do.
We would test how it, how it goes and, 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 and yes, I, I, I do think that it's very important to understand that when they speak about control, control, it is like that, but it's not controlled by me. It's not controlled by the code compliance officer. It's controlled by yourself.
I just want to make sure, because we're going to, we got to move on.
Yes.
Want to make sure that you're aware that they're going to do sound testing, that you're, he's going to be given notice, Michael, correct?
Yes, yes.
As will the neighbors to the north.
I, I guess we will repeat a similar process to what we did this week.
And you'll come back for the next one.
I'm going to move to continue to the June tenth, was it?
Yeah. Okay. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay. Do you then? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next previously continued items, planning board file twenty-four oh seven oh three, twelve fifty West Avenue, Alton Beach, Bayfront Overlap District.
And this staff report begins on page seventy-five of the board packages. So this is an application including PB twenty-four dash zero seven zero three and PB twenty-four dash zero six nine eight for twelve fifty West Avenue to create the Alton Beach Bayfront Overlay District, both comprehensive plan amendments and, and development, land development regulation modifications. Now, the planning board last reviewed this application on October twenty-ninth of last year. Since this application includes an FAR, FAR increase, there's a six step process that this applicant, these applications would have to go through. The first step is a first review by the planning board. The second step is a public workshop. That public workshop was held on December nineteenth of last year. The third step is a transmittal meeting of the planning board. That's where we are today. After today's meeting, there would be a first reading, public hearing at the city commission, followed by another community outreach meeting and followed by a, a final city commission meeting, which would be the sixth step in the process. Now, this application today was last continued by the planning board on February, February fourth to a date certain of today. After today's meeting, it would go to the city commission for a first reading. Now, we did note in our, our link to the video, which is on YouTube now, of the community workshop that was held on December nineteenth. We did provide to you a summary of that community meeting as part of the board packages. Now, I'm just going to go through some of what the applicant is proposing. The, the twelve fifty West Avenue side is located in the RM three multifamily high intensity zoning district. And these amendments would allow a ultra luxury development, including approximately a hundred and eighty restaurant seats located at twelve fifty West, West Avenue. The proposal includes an increase in FAR from the current zoned maximum two point seven five up to six point oh, as well as a building height increase from a hundred and fifty feet to three hundred and sixty feet. I believe the applicant in his latest, latest proposal is going to show a modification, lowering the height down to three hundred and thirty feet. Now, starting on page seventy-nine of the board packages, we did include a, what's supposed to be. Now, starting on page 79 of the board packages, we did include a, what's supposed to be modified, including what was proposed initially and what's proposed currently, so the board can see the difference between the initial proposal and what the applicant is currently proposing now. Now, based upon the plans submitted, we did note some observations. Based upon the current maximum FAR for the site, just taking the applicant's proposal, the entire maximum FAR of 2.75 is contained within the first 13 floors of the applicant's proposal. This would include an overall building height up to 158 feet, NGPD, and include 52 apartments and 180 restaurant seats. Now, the increased FAR does provide for additional 73 units and 210 feet of building height, and additional 272,000 of additional square feet. The average unit size proposed is approximately 3,250 square feet. Now, as noted in our report, we do believe that while the latest proposal has been scaled back, it still does far exceed the maximum FAR established in the comprehensive plan for the RM3 district. And we do believe it still is out of scale with the existing buildings in the immediate area, including structures that are non-conforming. Now, we did note, starting on page 81 of the board packages, since the Waverly project has been used as comparison, we did note some differences between what the applicant's proposal and what is compared to the 1330 West Avenue site, which is the Waverly project. So we do believe that, while we think that it may be appropriate to offer some bonuses based upon what the applicant's proposing, we do think that those modifications are slightly excessive. In summary, we are recommending that with the bonuses, that the maximum FAR is limited to no more than two above what's currently zoned, resulting in a maximum FAR of no more than 4.75. We're all recommending the building height bonus does not exceed more than 100 feet, resulting in a maximum height of no more than 300 feet. We're all recommending no modifications to the current setback requirements. And based upon the height, this will result in basically doubling what's shown for the setback requirements for the tower. Now, we do, since this is a transmittal meeting by the planning board, we are recommending that the planning board transmit this, both the comprehensive plan and the ALDR amendments to the city commission with negative recommendations, however, with the idea that the threshold does not exceed what staff has recommended. But I'll turn it over to the applicant for their proposal.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board members, staff, Michael Larkin, tour to South East King Boulevard, here is the applicant. With him is Michael Stern, Nicholas Rodriguez, my colleague, and our architect of record, Kobe Karp. Since we last appeared before you all, we've been doing a lot of tremendous outreach to this neighborhood. We've met with Wabna and they are very kind and led us almost an hour discussion with them, we appreciated that. We've also met with a newer group on West Avenue called SoB West Alliance. And almost most importantly, we've continued a dialogue with our immediate neighbors who would be impacted the most, 1228 West to our south and Monade Terrace to our north. While these associations have not adopted an official position on it, we feel that we made good progress and we're going to continue to work very hard with them to earn their support. Today, we're here to share the latest proposal for 1250 West Avenue with you all. It has changed substantially since the last time you all considered it, back in November. And we're here to speculatively request your favorable recommendation with regard to our proposed overlay. Next slide, and next slide. So the property of the subject of the overlay, 1250 West Avenue, we have highlighted Bikini Hostel site here to the right, because as you all know, a key part of our public benefit package is the permanent elimination of bikini hostel use at that property that has plagued this neighborhood for years. We know Bikini Hostel site has been the news recently, since the city of Miami began sending unhoused individuals to live there last November. And we want to kind of dispel some rumors and be abundantly clear that since then and now, we've had no operational control over the hostel property. That is solely within the province of the owners. But the conversion of Bikini Hostel into a homeless shelter is the latest manifestation of this nuisance that has plagued this neighborhood for a long, long time. And as long as that use is there, it will continue to be a problem for the neighborhood. This is why Michael is so earnest in his approach to try to eliminate that use. That being said, we feel our proposal has a lot of merit outside of our generous public benefit package proposed by Michael, so our presentation today focuses primarily on the merits of our legislation. Next slide. As you can see, the overlay only covers 1250 West Avenue. We are no longer including the Bikini Hostel site within our overlay zoning district. And now I'll turn it over to Michael Stern, he'll take this part of the presentation.
Thank you, Michael. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board. Appreciate you taking the time to hear our application. So on this slide, we see the existing condition of the property where we're proposing the overlay. To give you some history, this building is in very poor condition. It's obsolete physically, it was originally built as a healthcare facility, which is why it's one of the few buildings with no balconies. This is a building where the condo board is sort of on a financial cliff, where the potential assessments are going to outweigh the value of the units, common along the coast, but this is a prime example of that. In the current condition, there are 238 existing units. We'll get to it on a slide in a little bit, but we are proposing to reduce that density. And currently, under the zoning, short-term rentals are permitted. So we have two options in how we approach developing this site. One is, of course, an as-of-right development under the current zoning. And the second approach is why we're here, the proposed redevelopment for a modification of zoning. And I'll go through both of those with you. So this is an as-of-right condition. Anybody who's seen our presentation before will see that we added an area chart, because one of the complaints we heard from some of the opponents was perhaps there was more FAR in the as-of-right, such that this would maybe be a deceptive slide. So we added a table demonstrating that this is actually a perfectly compliant as-of-right condition. It's also the most likely condition, because the building would have to be U-shaped, like Monade Terrace is, to maximize water views, to have it make any economic sense at all. If we did a squatter, shorter building, which we could theoretically do, we'd end up with half the units with no water views and it would just make no economic sense. So this is a very realistic as-of-right condition. And what you'll notice about this as-of-right development, it's under the as-of-right zoning, we can do up to 286 units, so it would be a denser development. Short-term rentals would be permitted. The setbacks are actually, other than the two side setbacks that we're talking about, the waterfront setback and the street setback, which are actually the most impactful, are significantly less than what we are proposing. And we'll go through some slides to show that. And just from an architectural expression point of view, the current zoning leads to shorter, squatter buildings that are very difficult to make pretty attractive, et cetera, just from an urban planning standpoint. Also, monolithic skyline where everything is at the exact same height, mid-rise buildings, without any variety at all, is not great at urban planning either, in our opinion. Let's go to the next slide. So this shows you the genesis of kind of where we started to where we are today. We originally proposed a tower that was 420 feet, which clearly would have set a new height precedent for this corridor. We've significantly lowered it to 330 feet, which is significantly below the parapet of the Waverly. So it's similar in height to the Waverly, but actually a bit lower. And I can tell you that it's not an arbitrary number. This is the height at which we kind of hit the economic bone where it just doesn't make sense to build the building to overcome construction costs and provide the public benefits package that we're proposing to build this building. This building, we feel, is now very contextual, it's very respectful in terms of its height. And I understand that there will be, I'm sure, after we leave, a lot of complaints about how this is going to turn the neighborhood into Brickell or Sunny Isles or something like that. I'm building buildings in Brickell, they're three and four times the height of this. This is basically a relatively low tower just above a mid-rise building. We also heard some complaints historically that maybe our renderings or massing diagrams weren't to scale. We triple-checked them, they have been to scale, they are to scale. You could see that it's significantly shorter than the Waverly. And if there are any questions on that, Kobe Karp is here and will be happy to do that. We think that not only are we not destroying the character of this neighborhood, like I'm sure we'll hear a little bit later today, we're enhancing it with a much higher quality building that greets the street better and is less impactful to the neighbors. Next slide, so this is what we are proposing.
Do you want to say, because I want to lose stuff? Michael, explain why, how does the Waverly have so much more height than every other building on that street?
Well, that was approved before the downzoning, so back when that was built, approved in the late 90s, there was a higher height and higher FAR that was allowed citywide.
And after the...
Since the downzoning, basically, the heights were limited, even in this location, it was limited to 150 feet, but citywide, heights were reduced to no more than 200 feet.
All right, sorry, go ahead, Mike.
That's okay. So, and actually, I'm just going to touch on one more thing that, before we get into our proposed redevelopment that we've heard. I developed a property next door called Monade Terrace, which I think now is a pretty universally admired building in the city. We had plenty of opposition even back then, from some of the same folks who are now advocating for us to build Monade Terrace again, essentially. Many of those folks showed up at DRB to complain that that building at that height was problematic, which, of course, we disagree with. But people have asked, why can't you just build Monade Terrace again? You did it before, do it again. Land costs are double what they were and construction costs are double or two and a half times what they were when we did Monade Terrace. It's just not economically viable to build a building like that under the current zoning in the current realities of the construction cost climate. So moving on to our proposed redevelopment, what we are proposing is between 100 and 125 units, we would limit our density. And we think that density is the real impact, how many cars, how many trips, how much impact to the sewer system and the infrastructure. And we're proposing essentially a third of the allowable density, which we think is the real impact to the neighborhood. We would prohibit short-term rentals, the units would be larger in size. They'd be large enough that they could never be short-term rentals anyways. And most importantly, we're proposing a very compact tower footprint that will have the least impact on the neighbors and will minimize the shadow compared to a blockier, stockier as-of-right building. And we also have the opportunity to create something that's truly an icon and a landmark building that the neighborhood can be proud of, rather than another ho-hum mid-rise building. So let's look at those real-world impacts. So this is a slide showing the pedestal setback with the as-of-right to the left and what we are proposing to the right. The dark gray is the 50-foot section, which is the maximum allowable height of the pedestal. So we are proposing a much more compact pedestal at the 50-foot level with a much bigger waterfront setback and a much bigger street setback that sort of cascades from the street, rather than putting a big ugly parking podium right at the street, which is kind of the older condition, the Waverly was built that way with a big parking pedestal greeting the street. We don't think that's the nicest way to plan buildings. If we go to the next slide, this shows the tower setback.
Mr. Chairman, can we have about 10 more minutes?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
10? Yeah.
Eight?
Kidding, go ahead.
Okay, I'll try to be...
There'll be a lot of public comment, so go ahead.
So this is a slide showing what we think is the most impactful thing, which is on the left, the as-of-right tower would have a wall that is 318 feet long on each neighbor, basically creating a wall-to-wall shadow condition for 1228 and Monade Terrace. That is about the worst shadow condition you can have, and that's what the zoning calls for as-of-right. We are proposing a very shallow tower footprint, only about 100 feet deep. And a comment was made earlier that in our proposal, all of the as-of-right floor area is only going up to 13 floors. That's true, and the reason is because we are shrinking our tower footprint to make it less impactful to our neighbors. So there's less FAR on each floor as it goes up, because we think shrinking the tower footprint and making it less blocky and more elegant and narrow is actually the best condition for the neighbors and the best urban planning model as well. So that's what's going on there. So if you look at the waterfront setback on the as-of-right, it's 53 feet. And we're proposing to set the tower back from the water 140 feet. And the street setback is 50 feet in the as-of-right condition on the tower, and we are proposing almost 200 feet away from the street. And that's where the real shadow impact happens, at the water and at the street. And we're also dealing with it on our two neighbors by shrinking our tower footprint and making it less impactful, opening up the corners for the waterfront views. And we actually strategically placed the tower right where Monade Terrace's elevator and stair corps is, so we're not impacting views. If we go to the next slide, I have a couple of slides...
Sorry, Michael, before you move on, just a question about the impact. Have we done a study to, as of right, how many units are actually blocked versus if we're doing the proposed? Because I mean, there's a difference of who's being affected on, depending on the width and height.
We haven't done that study, but we can, and we can provide that. I haven't counted the units that have impacted views, but I can tell you that about half the units at Monade Terrace would have views impacted in the as-of-right condition. And I don't know how many at 1228, but I assume similar, about half, maybe a third, because the building is deeper. But we can follow up and get you that. So this is a slide just demonstrating real-world impact. On the left, that's the as-of-right condition, just showing the enormity of an as-of-right wall condition, wall-to-wall, that will always be in shadow to some level. And on the right, that cascading pedestal that steps up to a shallower tower, which we think is much more attractive in the way it greets the street. We also, in the as-of-right condition, couldn't afford to do a buried parking pedestal like we did at Monade Terrace, just the realities of what construction costs are today. And with the proposed tower, we would be burying all the parking and doing a very lush landscaped front, similar to what we did at Monade Terrace, so that the building would greet the street in the correct way. If we go to the next slide, this is from a D-line at Monade Terrace. So the as-of-right condition facing West Avenue is on the left and the cascading pedestal is on the right. And this is much more respectful and empathetic to the view corridors at Monade Terrace that exist today. We'll preserve most of the views from Monade Terrace, both on the waterside and on the street side. And then this is a project overview, just showing the building in context and in scale. I think we're going to hear maybe some contentions that this is somehow fundamentally changing the context or character of the neighborhood. It is shorter than a building that is two buildings down. It creates a variety of skyline that I think is interesting and diverse, and it will be a very, very iconic architectural building that will complement the quality of Monade Terrace.
Great, thank you, Michael. So this is a context slide that shows the different buildings along the bayfront and West Avenue. It's important to note that with the reduction in our height to 330 feet, we are in context of the existing built environment of West Avenue. We're shorter than the Waverly, we're shorter than the Floridian, and we're shorter than the center tower at the Flamingo complex. Next slide. This is a summary of our legislation. Note that we're just proposing residential accessory uses, no outdoor restaurant seating. Our floor area has been reduced from 7.75 down to 5.75, our height from 420 to 330 feet. We're modifying the side interior setbacks, we're including some allowable setback encroachments, and we're asking for administrative approval of our mechanical parking. Next slide. As Michael discussed earlier, we're asking a density reduction to 75 units per acre. This is a 50% reduction of what is permitted right now. We're going to proffer voluntary covenant prohibiting short-term rentals. We are working with the city administration on development agreement. The two main prongs of that public benefit would be the acquisition of the Bikini Hostel property, the demolition of those buildings, and the conveyance of the land to the city. Let the city choose what to do in consultation with the residents of West Avenue. The second component of the public benefit package is actually finishing the baywalk. The baywalk could be as phenomenal as a beach walk, I think. There are three missing links behind South Bay Club, behind 1228 West immediately to our south, and behind 1450 Lincoln Road. We're going to absorb all the hard and soft costs in connection with these missing links. Next slide. These are the reasons to recommend, to transmit and recommend approval. We have reduced impact to the views from Monade Terrace and Bayview Terrace, reduced impact to West Avenue's street frontage and Biscayne Bay, reduced density, that in turn reduces traffic and infrastructure burdens. We're consistent with the as-built height along the West Avenue corridor. We are going to eliminate the short-term rental opportunity. It eliminates the severe economic hardship unfolding for 1250 West Avenue unit owners. Michael got into it a little bit, but it's hard to imagine what they're going through trying to assemble the necessary funds to remedy their building, which it can't be. There's substantial economic benefits created for the city and neighborhood, an opportunity to create an architectural landmark. And finally, Bikini Hostel will be extinguished, the baywalk will finally be completed. That's all we have, Mr. Chairman, we're happy to answer any questions and we're done.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do you have the Bikini under contract?
I'm happy to take that one. We don't have a final agreement yet with Bikini, we expect to have it done before land use, which is...
March 11th.
March 11th, we expect to have it done before then.
Or else we can't go forward in March 11th.
And our application is, of course, predicated on extinguishing that use. And we understand that we have to deliver that, and we will.
Michael, people live in this condo right now?
They do.
Okay, and so you have some type of tacit agreement that if you get approval, then...
No.
But don't you own the, like...
We own, I'm happy to address that. We own, I'm happy to address that. We own many units in the building today, and we are under contract for over ninety-eight percent of the remaining units.
You control the board, okay.
Yeah.
Right.
Do you have any other buildings that are under contract in the area, or just this one?
Just this one.
Isn't, Michael, maybe you can answer this one. Isn't the Baywalk already funded?
The Baywalk was funded, but it was under two thousand and eighteen construction dollars. So if you listen to the director of CIP now, that's about sixty percent funded. There's a forty percent gap.
And how much is that?
I don't know the actual dollars, it's millions, but it's, I think it hovered around four to five million.
Yes, between four and five million.
All right, I'm gonna open the pub. My biggest concern in the project is your architect, but other than that, it's. I love you, Kobe. Let's start within chambers. Anybody in the chambers to speak on this item? Yeah? Actually, let her go, and then you'll come next. Thank you, sorry, I didn't see you over there.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Jackie Laland. Twelve-twenty-eight Bay, our president is here, Michael, and we're here because.
President of the Association.
President of the Association, sorry.
And you are just a resident, or you're on the?
No, I'm on the board, and I'm chair of this development committee.
Great, thank you.
And what's your building? I'm sorry, is there a name of your building, or is it?
Twelve-twenty-eight.
That's just.
Bayview Terrace, sorry about that.
That's okay, thank you.
No, I just don't, I'm not familiar.
So we're here because we want to give you our position on what's happening today. And we want to tell you that we are cautiously optimistic that, in fact, these two deals get done. We think it's critical that the bikini be tied to this project. We have just received the information, just started negotiations. And we just want to let this board know, the commissioners know, and everybody know that the mitigations that we have, the hell we're about to go through for the next three years, we want to make sure that there's good faith on part of the developer.
I'm gonna stop you one second. Her point about that it's gotta be contingent on the Bikini Hostel, is there any impediment to that happening? No, so you can represent with no doubt that if this deal gets done, the Bikini Hostel will be part of it.
Yeah, so the deal is predicated on us extinguishing that use, and we understand that.
All right, because I agree with her, and I wanted to make sure that's the case.
I think everybody in the whole city of Miami Beach agrees with us.
Yeah, but you raise a good point. Is that a guarantee? But go ahead.
May I just ask one more question about this? What about contracts that are already in place with the Bikini Hostel? How will those go away? With other entities?
So I'm happy to address it. We don't have any, obviously, direct control or involvement in that, but part of our deal with the Bikini Hostel is that they need to deliver the property to us vacant. We have clauses in the agreement that it's delivered vacant, A, that whatever process they need to go through to vacate it will be done humanely and properly and in coordination with the city of Miami Beach. We have provisions in there that the city of Miami Beach is kept informed of what that plan is to humanely vacate the property. But to be unequivocal, they owe us vacancy when we close on that property, and we expect that to happen in roughly a hundred and twenty days, and that's our expectation.
Thank you.
Thanks. Sorry, go ahead. But you bring up points, and I want to get clarification on.
No, I think that's exactly what we want to do. And we just want to let you folks know, while we have just begun discussion with these people, while we are cautiously optimistic, you know, we need this to be proper for the neighborhood, for our buildings, and frankly, for the city. So we're hoping that everything's gonna work out smoothly.
So are you supportive of the proposed?
At this moment in time, we haven't fully developed our position yet because we're still in conversation. I'm sure you can imagine how difficult it is to go through three years of hell, and we've got a lot of expenses associated with this particular project. So we're in conversation, and we will get something definitively as an opinion to you, I'd say, within the next two weeks.
Right, and just so you know, and I'm sure you do know this, our board is simply making a recommendation.
Yes.
And it sounds to me, from what Michael described, there's a lot of work that's gonna be done between now and the first hearing by commission, right? Regardless of what we recommend.
Yeah, things may change, and like I say, the city commission is gonna provide input, and ultimately, it is up to the decision of the city commission.
Right, okay.
Right, and we understand that, but we want to encourage this board, all boards, the commissioners, to make sure that all of these elements are dealt with.
Right, but my question to you is, so today, and I know we're gonna hear from other people, but we have to decide whether do we recommend to the commission to pass this the way they're proposing or not? And so at this point, knowing you have a lot of work to do, are you in favor of us passing this with a favorable recommendation?
We do not have a solid opinion on that at this time, but I can tell you, the reduction, I mean, it's looking much more attractive. Let's just, you know, be common sense, folks. We want to see the property developed, we want it to be right for everybody, and, you know, conditioned on a number of things. If those things happen, you know, I think it's like the sun shining, I think it would be a good thing.
Okay, and Jackie, what are the things that you're still looking for as the community that you're still hoping to?
Well, one of the most important things for the residents of West Avenue is we don't have parking, extra parking anywhere. It's a common and persistent dilemma within the neighborhood. So at first, I believe they were going to build a parking garage, and we still are very much in favor of that proposition. And I think it's critical for the neighborhood, so I think the city really needs to consider that as part of this deal. You know, everybody wants the property developed, it is an eyesore. The bikini, I don't want to waste your time talking about the consistent problems there. We don't, that needs to go away.
But in terms of the actual structure itself, is there, are there?
We're happy with the reduction. We're very concerned about the mitigations with respect to our building, obviously, that's why we're here today. So I think a lot of progress has been made. We're cautiously optimistic. I'll give you a definitive answer in about two weeks. Sound good?
And Michael, so what was the difference? Now it seems like you're just deeding the property to the city as before you were gonna build the parking garage and then lease it, I guess, to the city.
Good morning, Jackie.
Good morning, Michael.
Yes, the public benefits package has been restructured. What it is now is that we will acquire Bikini Hostel, demolish it, grade it, sod it, landscape it, fence it, and then convey it to the city. I felt that our prior approach was too prescriptive. I think we were telling the city commission what to do with it, or telling the neighbors what to do with it, and that did not sit well with some. So I think it's better for we convey it, and Jackie just mentioned excellent future use. The city commission will not do anything without the consultation of the residents in this corridor. So that's where we're at, John.
So I guess I use a question, how long generally it takes for a city to decide what to do with the land and, you know, and then to decide to build a parking garage there for the benefit of the residents? I mean, is that something that can be done in a couple of years, or is that something that takes ten years? I just don't know. Because, I mean, ten years from now is, to me, not really, I mean, that kind of guts a lot of the benefit, especially as all the West Avenue construction, you know, the roads occurs. I mean, we're gonna lose a hundred and something parking spaces.
And I can't speak to the timing, I have no idea. We have projects that, you know, have taken years or decades.
I agree with you, John.
I'm sure the desire is to move quickly on this.
I agree with you, John, and I don't think that we should, I think we need to decide what we're gonna do with it before, I mean, we don't want, we have properties all over the city that nobody knows what to do with, and I don't think we want that.
We were just very hap, I'm so sorry. We were very happy with what was proposed with the Bikini Hotel, like.
To let the neighbors decide, right, okay.
I think, but either way, whether the people of the neighborhood of West Avenue are opposed or for this park, and the main thing that everyone's agreeing on is getting rid of this Bikini Hostel. So I think the benefit they're trying to bring is eliminating Bikini Hostel, and then the second part is not for us necessarily plan out today.
Anything else from you?
No, thank you for your time.
No, oh, sorry, Jackie, one second.
I guess based on the association's preliminary review, would you all prefer, let's say the applicant were to purchase it and just build an as-of-right development, what would the association's preference be as it relates to that, the as-of-right development, or?
We would not prefer the as-of-right. We do agree theoretically, obviously, with the reduction in density, the number of units, the stress on the neighborhood, the parking, all of that kind of stuff. It's proven, I think, Monade Terrace is obviously an excellent example of, you know, how a neighborhood could change and become a better building, better hood, better everything, you know? So definitely, the density, we would not prefer that. It would directly impact us, I think, in a negative way. So we do have a tower, it's just a different orientation, right? So we have a smaller tower, so tower gets turned, grows a little taller. Not so bad.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am, sorry.
Thank you. Amy Leto, resident of West Avenue and a member of the West Avenue Neighborhood Association, WAVNA, which has been successfully advocating for West Avenue since 2012. So I think what was clear with the exchange we just heard is that there is a lot to be decided here still. So to make a recommendation at this point, I believe, is a bit premature. But that said, we appreciate Mr. Larkins and Mr. Stern's time. He has, or they have, met with several neighborhood associations, they have done a citywide Zoom call, and there was a lot gleaned from that. Also, I would like to just state upfront that we know that Mr. Stern can build a beautiful building. And evidence of that is right next door, Monade Terrace. It's a gorgeous building, we assume it must have been profitable for the builder and as well, a good investment for those who bought into it. So with that said, we would like, as Monade Terrace is, this development at twelve-fifty to be built as-of-right at a hundred and fifty feet. So that's where we start out, and that's not just WAVNA's position, that's the position of residents of West Avenue. And that's based on our January sixth meeting whereby an overflow crowd of a hundred and two people voted on this matter. It was a straw vote, but out of a hundred and two people, ninety-eight were opposed to this development as proposed. Two were for it, and two were non-committal. So if that is our starting ground, I would like to continue that it's not just West Avenue and WAVNA that does not support this project as proposed, but the planning department. So Tom Mooney's planning department, which I'm sure you have in your materials, came out with initial assessment of this proposal. Granted, it was before some of the downsizing. Nevertheless, there were some very interesting statements in that report. So I would just like to read a few. It states here that out of thirteen criteria, the planning board found that seven were not consistent with the neighborhood, that two were partially consistent, another two were consistent, and two are not applicable. So what this would state is that the overwhelming consensus of the planning department is that this development is not good for West Avenue either. And just in words, let me read a few statements. It states that the proposed development is out of scale with the immediate neighborhood, and that it creates an isolated overlay district that bears no relationship or consistency with the surrounding context, and that the benefits to the neighborhood are not commensurate with the impacts to the neighborhood, that it could adversely affect living conditions in the neighborhood, and it could seriously reduce light and air to adjacent areas. Furthermore, they believe that the economics do not work for the neighborhood either in that they could adversely affect property values and be a deterrent to improvement or development of adjacent properties. None of that sounds positive for West Avenue.
Let me ask something. I'm a little puzzled by that only because of the significant decrease in density.
This is the point.
Is that not something you would be, you know, in favor of?
I think that's an excellent point. So I would ask that the planning department reassess this project with the downsizing that has been proposed. I think that in order for all of you to come up with a good assessment, to come down with a recommendation on this, would require that the planning department chime in once again because this has been changed dramatically from the original proposal. I just, again, go back to, this is premature to make an assessment on this project now.
So just to pause for a moment, so the review criteria has not been updated based on the reduction? This is based on the original?
Well, we still have, we still believe that although they made some modifications, it's not significant enough for us to modify our recommendation.
In the closing statement of that recommendation, use the word hostile, and not as in Bikini Hostel, but as in that this proposal would be hostile to the neighborhood. Let me just finish with this.
That was based on the prior plan, right?
But still, even, we don't believe that they've downsized it enough.
Okay, all right.
Yes, and lastly, I'd just like to finish with this, that I know it's not unusual in this case, and Mr. Stern did sort of presage some of what would be said today. But Bikini Hostel is something that nobody wants, other than the owners perhaps. But we're losing sight of the point here, which is this development. It shouldn't be conflated with or not wanting Bikini Hostel in our neighborhood. So let's please concentrate on what we're talking about here, which is height and far. And lastly, this idea of incentives, completing public works projects, buying properties that are undesirable, et cetera, it creates a perverse incentive for developers to use in order to have granted what they're looking for, which is all this excess foreign height. So I wish that a city as rich, as wealthy as ours would start to look at this a little bit more strategically and start to fund these projects themselves with our tax dollars instead of depending on developers to do it for them. And lastly, there was an article in the Miami Herald this weekend, which was an investigation into the new condo laws that were passed that are so adversely affecting so many associations, I think, including the twelve-fifty. I think they've fallen into this bucket whereby the costs are so onerous to repair and replace all these components in their building that perhaps were not kept up. Nevertheless, it's created, again, a perverse incentive to developers to come in and say, we're going to be your knight in shining armor, we're gonna buy you out of this predicament you're in. And it really is unfair that people will lose their homes because of this. So let's not incentivize this type of behavior.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in chambers to speak on this?
Can I make a comment on what you said? I just want to bring up that I object in strong terms. I understand what the developer is doing with the bikini, but this is a problem for the city. And if we're gonna set a precedent where there's a problem across the street that's solved by money of a developer asking for extra height, when does this stop? We saw this on Five Park. You know, he gave, basically, the people of WAVNA had Stockholm syndrome from watching this building deteriorate for ten years. And then he said, oh, I'm gonna get extra height, but I'm gonna tear it down and I'm gonna build you a park. And that's why parks are so sensitive. So we have a park, a three-acre park across from Publix where there's nothing but homeless people and kids playing in a park. When does this stop? When does the city, as she says, take responsibility for? If Bikini Hostel is a problem because Miami-Dade dumped homeless people on there, the city should take care of it. We should not say to a developer, oh, you will get a one-time special. We're gonna go against what as-is, and you're gonna solve our problem and give you extra height. In the case of Five Park, the problem solved was that the developer didn't want to tear down the building, and it should have been condemned. So by holding it hostage, he has a five-hundred-and-fifty-foot building. That's not right. And if we start this unintended consequences, I just think it's wrong. Now, that's for the commission to decide, but that's my personal opinion on this board.
Got it, well taken. Is there anyone on Zoom?
We have at least ten callers on Zoom to start, so. Start with the first one, Forrest One, or for Ross One?
You there?
Hello? Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, can you just tell us, were you sworn in yet?
I don't think they have to be sworn in on these legislative matters.
Oh, they don't, okay, never mind. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, Ferris, Iqwan, thirteen-thirty West Avenue. I'm speaking today to urge you to accept staff recommendations of a negative transmittal for the applicant's item. We're kind of getting worn down here by the repetitive filings and continuances, and the head fake decreases in density. You know, they start at four-thirty, and then it's three-sixty, now it's three-thirty. The point is, all of that is above what the law allows. All of us also are now on notice that the lobbyist appearing on behalf of the developer was a. lobbyist appearing on behalf of the developer was exposed just weeks ago on the dais of our honorable city commission, essentially seeking to buy and corrupt the neighborhood association, that of Belle Isle. And now, after the WAVNA association unanimously rejected this developer monstrosity, the same bad actors are referencing a new neighborhood association for the same street. Esteemed board members, we, the people of Miami Beach, are at a crossroads. Either remain resident-friendly, home for all, or be sold out to the highest bidder. Attempting to negotiate with these bad actors is like attempting to make a deal with the devil. We will not win. You will not win. Miami Beach will lose. I urge you to reject any more special treatment for these mega-developers under the guise of minuscule public benefits. And I don't understand, again, why this person is still allowed to appear before the city commission. The developer referenced not being able to build another Monet Terrace because of the cost of land. While I highly doubt that, maybe he can show us how much he's paying the owners of 1250, but you know, the remedy for him is to get a better price from them if he can't build as of right. And you know, so far as the bikini hostel, again, developer groups have been linked, paying for the unhoused people that are living there. So that also is a very, as everybody said before, a very perverse kind of reasoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next caller is Gail Durham.
Hello, everyone. My name is Gail Durham. I live in the West Avenue neighborhood, and I recently enjoyed, recently rejoined the board of the West Avenue Neighborhood Association because I believe it's the best association in Miami Beach. I just want to address maybe felt like incorrect information given by the developer. Five years ago, WAVNA met with Monet Terrace developer, and we supported 100% the Monet Terrace project. No one went to the design review board and objected to anything he proposed. Second of all, since 2013, hotels are prohibited in this zone. So this property cannot be a hotel. It can't be short-term rental. It can't be a suite hotel. It can't be apartment hotel. It can't be a bed and breakfast. It's all prohibited. I just wanted to reference also, well, the bikini hostel. There are 13 other small, low-end, cheap hotels on West Avenue. That would make more money renting to the homeless trust rather than to tourists. So, you know, the developer's not willing to buy up all 13 of these hotels, so it doesn't really solve any problems. And second of all, the biggest problem with the bikini bar used to be that it was open until 5:00 AM. However, courageous commissioners have reduced the hours to midnight. So now that the bar can only be served alcohol till midnight, you know, the problems with that have been very much reduced. There doesn't seem to be any commissioner sponsor for this proposal, because it doesn't look like any of the commissioners even want this. We also have a major concern with the five other condos in our neighborhood who are being aggressively contacted by developer condo flippers. I don't know what the correct term is. We just call them developer condo flippers, where they buy up a whole property. 1228 has been contacted, 800 West Ave, and also three condos on Lincoln Court. So, you know, based on what looks like it could be spreading, it would be very dangerous zoning planning to allow condo developers to give money or cash or buy out a building next door in exchange for extra height and FAR. Please abide by what happened at the January 6 WAVNA meeting, where the vast majority of the residents opposed this. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Our next caller is Martin Moller.
Yes, hello. Thank you very much for letting me speak today. I was at that WAVNA meeting where 98 out of 102 people expressed opposition to this project. I think that's extraordinary in this, today and age, that you can get that many people to agree on anything. And I can tell you that the atmosphere, the energy at that meeting was extraordinary. It was something I have not seen much in Miami Beach, frankly. People were motivated against this project because I think by and large, they recognize that this is a classic case of, unfortunately, developer manipulation. We're still seeing today the pink brutalist blob that we all know is nothing like what that as-of-right project would ever look like. I wonder if the planning board members are aware that many South Beach citizens got text messages out of the blue, ostensibly asking your opinions about the bikini hostel, but actually trying to push you to respond in a way that would suggest that you favor the tower at 1250 West Avenue, which was very vaguely mentioned in the text message. So we're seeing this kind of manipulation even of the populace to try to get people building what would be a deceptive level of support for this project. I greatly appreciated the board member who mentioned the problems resulting from Five Park, and that's one of our greatest concerns, is that allowing anything above an as-of-right development on this site would perpetuate the problem down the road. It's a slippery slope. We're going to find more and more developers coming and saying, hey, you did this for 1250 West Avenue. Why can't you just give us a little bit more here? And the next thing you know, we have a wall of buildings around the perimeter of Miami Beach, and we have withering neighborhoods, withering businesses on the inside, because we all know perfectly well that all of these developments will be aimed at the absolute richest people in the world. They are not going to be here on a daily or weekly basis, and they will not be supporting local businesses. Please oppose anything above an as-of-right development for 1250 West Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Wayne.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I have a few comments. I'm not as eloquent as the prior speakers in my messaging, but I believe in development. I believe in advancement, that things get old and they have to be replaced. But there are a couple of comments that the sponsor said relative to cost. One is that the cost to buy property and buy out those condo units that exist today went up. Yes, they did. But also, the sale price went up. So without a P&L statement of what 150 or 200 feet would look like to the sponsor, there's really no basis to state that, you know, everything doubled. Well, so did the price of his condo when completed. So that should be a zero-sum game. What's more, I am really disturbed by the timing of that effort by the hostel to turn that into a homeless shelter. The timing was just, you know, as the discussions with the sponsor took place. Whether the sponsor had participation in that, I have no idea, but I could tell you that his efforts to create that 320-foot tower now had direct result in the attempt by the hostel to hold the city hostage. And that's not any way to deal with the city. It might work in New York. It doesn't work in Miami Beach, is what, and I used to agree with Keith Marx all the time. Lately, not so much, but I appreciate his comments on that issue on his first day on the job. So we need more middle class. By lowering the number of volume of middle-class units in the city is not a positive thing, and it's going to be a domino effect. And maybe our, the planning boards wish that all of West Avenue become, you know, affluent and $3,000 a square foot units. I know it will be the next building next door, will be the next unit, the next opportunity for a developer to create that environment. But is that what we want? Do we want to have affluent people along West Avenue that come for three to six months a year? Or do we want residents with smaller units, more volume? That's a question of the planning. And I thank you for your time. Have a great day.
Thank you. Our next caller is Alex.
My name is Alex Acoustis. I personally love this building. I believe it's beautiful. It has a very nice elegant touch. I don't even understand why these people there are posed to this. I mean, the whole area is going to be upgraded. It's like somebody gives us something, we get the benefit, we don't have to pay anything. So I really don't understand. It's a little bit taller. There are many tall buildings. There've been tall buildings on West Avenue. So the boardwalk, you guys don't even say much about the boardwalk. The boardwalk could have been done five years ago. This developer will help to expedite. The one thing we don't have in life is time. So we're going to wait until you approve the boardwalk, and when? Why hasn't happened? Why they're short in budget? This developer's going to make a beautiful building, as well as the Monet, and it's going to look, boardwalk is going to finish. As far as the bikini hostel, everybody knows, it's full of homeless. It's not about having a license to operate until 2 o'clock or 5:00 AM or anything. It's full of homeless. So you want to do a nice environment. You want to walk to a nice city. Most likely, they're going to build the caras. I believe this is great. Neighbors like myself, many people that I know, they like it. I hope it gets approved. That's all.
Thank you. Our next caller is Steve.
Good morning. Thank you for hearing me. I want to take this in a slightly different direction, which is, I'm trying to imagine, what if this were a private club, a bar, club type of thing, instead of a condominium? And a couple years ago, this promoter of this club had completed a different exclusive club, which conforms to all the laws regarding liquor licensing, like hours, amplified music, outdoor noise, and all that. They finished this club. It's limited membership, sold out at amazingly high rates. The neighbors are pretty happy, in part because hardly anyone actually ever goes to the club. There's hardly any traffic, hardly any garbage, and all that. Of course, the neighbors never go because it's way too expensive for them. But having made a lot of money on that deal, this promoter wants to develop another club. But this club, he says, cannot succeed without permanent exemptions from major aspects of the liquor laws. They need to have music all night. They need exceptions to lots and lots of different things in order to make money, they claim. Because liquor costs more now, bartenders make more money, et cetera, et cetera. They are trying to grease the public approval machinery by payments of various sorts, which they say will benefit the public. And to help this happen, mind you, they have concocted an overlay district that they're calling, let's just call it the Cleveland-er overlay district, just for fun. All right, in this scenario, would anybody entertain that argument, even for a minute? The answer is no. They wouldn't. And yet, what we have here at 1250 West is essentially the same thing. It is a developer coming in and saying that, what are the laws? Why are the laws even here? Why bother with the laws? I'm just going to state a position, and then I'm going to see the city planner report just kind of meet me halfway. And I can state any position, and they'll meet me halfway, even if in their analysis, everything is inconsistent. Doesn't matter. For some reason, they're going to meet him halfway anyway. And that would not happen in a situation with a private club and a liquor license and all that. So why is it happening here? I would also like to say that, note that, the only positives that keep coming out, this came out of the planner's report, this came from the neighbor's testimony, has to do with the impacts, like traffic, for instance, and things like that. That's nice, but the fact of the matter is, this is super prime real estate. It's going to be one way or another. We can't work around that. That means the units are going to be very large, and so you're going to have fewer of them in the same amount of space. It also means they're going to have tons of their own parking, so that isn't an issue. The people won't be there very much, so there's actually hardly any impact on our utility systems. But the point is, that's going to be the case either way, whether you have this much larger, denser, taller tower, or you have a matter of right development. And so that's, I think you need to discount that argument. And that's where almost all the positives of this are coming into it. Last but not least, I would just like to say law and order. This is something Mayor Minor emphasizes over and over. He ran on it and all that. But why would this be confined to police actions, and especially to rowdy crowds of students at spring break? It doesn't make sense to me that somehow, when in planning and zoning, the law is held as sort of a completely negotiable thing, whereas for other laws, it is regarded as something that you do not break that law.
Steve, thank you. You have exceeded the time allowable for a public comment. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for hearing me.
Thanks, Steve.
Please vote no.
Our next caller is Natalie Kay.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you for hearing the community's thoughts. I'm Natalie Kaufman. I live in the West Avenue neighborhood as well. We have been attending these meetings on this property project for, what, six months now? I've never seen evidence of this developer team appropriately approaching this project with consideration to the community. It has been, you know, they had their opening gambit of the horrendously tall Needle Tower, and it's clear to me that that was just a manipulation to come back to us and now try to sell us the quote-unquote shorter tower, which is still outside of our laws. I am personally very tired of hearing the argument that they can't make money on this unless they go outside our laws. Well, you're a private developer. This is a capitalist country. Perhaps on this investment, you should sell off and call it a loss. If you can't get it done at a profit that suits you, then maybe this isn't the project for you. Because I have a feeling that we can find a creative solution that is beautiful, that conforms to our laws. Someone today mentioned the hideous blob, the one that conforms to FAR. I have to agree with that review. We have wonderful architecture schools here in the area. I bet any number of students could come up with a gorgeous building that is affordable and suits our community and makes us proud, that comes in, perhaps not at a great economic profit, but again, that is the private developer's risk. There is risk in investments. Perhaps this investment is not working out for you. I invite you to leave this investment behind. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Our next caller is Yuri.
Two minutes. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Uri Serrulla. I'm a resident of Miami Beach. I was born in Miami Beach, and I've been here for the past 30 years. For me, this is a very important project. As someone who spends a lot of time in this neighborhood, whether walking to meet friends and family, enjoying the Baywalk alongside them, or just passing through literally every day, I really love this area. I love this neighborhood. I grew up here, and I want to see it thrive. I see the replacement of the bikini hostel with a park or garage or whatever the neighborhood feels and needs is extremely important, especially since the hostel is definitely not something the city and the residents want. And the completion of the Baywalk are changes that would have a great impact on us, especially in me, since it's something that I really want to be finished in the city. It will create a safer, a more peaceful environment, while also making the neighborhood more walkable and welcoming for everyone. And just to finish, I want to say that I really like the improvements that the development team is making. I see the shorter, the height of the new building to be very nice. It looks impactful in a way that tourists, residents are going to like it. And I really hope the planning board would get on with this project and would agree with it, and would pass it through to the commission and to the mayor. Thank you so much for having me here today to be able to speak on this. And I wanted to thank the team. I wanted to thank the planning board. I wanted to thank everyone in the city. And I look forward to seeing Miami Beach getting even more and And I look forward to seeing Miami Beach getting even more and more beautiful, safer, peaceful, and nice for everyone in the city.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
Our next caller is Jessica Davis.
Jessica.
Hello?
Yes, two minutes.
Yes.
And please don't be redundant if it's repeating, but go ahead, two minutes.
Okay, I'm, okay, my name is Jessica Davis. I am an owner at 1228 West Avenue. I live on the north side. I have owned and lived at 1228 West Avenue for over twenty years. My particular unit, which I retired to, is directly affected by the new development. I just want to say that I really like this new proposal and the height reduction. I would like to sit on my terrace and look at my beautiful bayview and look at a beautiful building, which I believe the current proposal would provide us. What I would urge the planning board to do is to please take what these neighborhood associations are saying with a grain of salt, because I do not want to be, have my investment and my views dictated to by them. At the January sixth meeting, which Ms. Litos mentioned, many of the people who were opposed to the 1250 Tower, who were there, do not live on West Avenue, including Ms. Durham, who used to live on West Avenue, but no longer does. And it's a little bit disingenuous that Ms. Litos, who lives in the Floridian, one of the tallest and probably widest buildings on West Avenue, is opposed to something that she's not going to be living next door to. I really, yes, I understand it is about West Avenue and all of our residents, but please, I urge you to take the needs of the people, 1228 West Avenue, the residents, the owners, who are going to be directly affected by this development. And in my mind, what is proposed, the tower height is fine. And again, we want to be surrounded by beautiful buildings. So thank you very much for your time and for taking all of this into consideration. I personally really appreciate you just thinking about the people at 1228 West Avenue. Thank you again.
Thank you, next.
Thanks, our next caller is Deborah.
Jess, hi, how are you? And thank you for hearing me. I just don't understand why we're still talking about this. Like, let's be positive, let's change Miami Beach. We need some, like a news views, we need, we need to be, we need to move forward, you know? We need to just have a new, better future for all of us. Where Miami Beach is, is a place where it's a lot of homeless, it's a lot of, we need to change. I just wanna tell everyone that we have to be much positive about it. We need developers, we need developers. They're bringing new things, new buildings. I live in the 65th West Avenue, and I wanna see nice things. I don't wanna see old buildings, I'm tired of it. And I need this resistance to change, need to stop. We need to continue in positive. Thank you so much for hearing.
Thank you.
Next caller is Alice Papini.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, perfect, hi. I just wanted to say, I also live on West Avenue, and I really support this development that has been proposed, also with the changes that were proposed today. I think it's an iconic and thoughtful design that would enhance the architectural landscape, and it would contribute to a continued growth and modernization of Miami Beach, which I think is much needed. And that's all I wanted to share.
Thank you, Alice.
Thanks, our next caller is Eric Marshall.
Hi, good, good morning, thanks again, Eric Marshall. Thank you, planning board members, for taking the time. As always, it seems to be a fantastic job. I am six and two hour, two and a half hours in, thanks again. Just a couple of comments, I guess, with regard to the presentation. That context view of West Avenue in 2000, totally all the different heights of the buildings, what they failed to mention is all those buildings besides Five Parks were built in 2005 or sooner. I moved down in 2001, West Avenue, lived here ever since. And very frightened that if this one's approved, that it's just gonna go right down that road. You know, that's my main, main concern. One still used that same argument, this is no coincidence that it's so soon after Five Parks. So my, my main concern is that if we approve this one. Mr. Mooney, who David Swirzberg works with, is the encyclopedia of the planning commission, twice turned this down, you know, recommended lower height, negative recommendations and everything else. He went right through those lists, and nine of them didn't meet or work consistent. I don't wanna be redundant with everybody else saying the same things as well, but for sure, this seems to be something where if this is through, the next one. And I love the planning board member who mentioned, hey, when does it become the developers' prerogative or responsibility to fix up a mess of the city, which is the Bikini Hostels? Thanks again for taking the time, really appreciate it. Thanks again.
Thanks, Eric.
Next caller is Liz, Liz Hirschfield.
How many more on the line, do you see? One more? Okay. Liz?
Can you, yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. I just wanted to say, I was actually, I'm 1330 West, and I sat on a prior call and was really opposed to this development. I'm actually pleased to see the, the reduction in height, I think it looks much better. I think the building looks beautiful. I do know that, looking at the building next to us, the Monad's gorgeous, but it seems to have a lot of issues. So I would wanna just be sure that, you know, this is really carefully thought through in terms of the quality and how it's being built, because it did, there was some residents from Monad on the last call that were really upset with a lot of things that were left incomplete. And then I think people bring up a lot of really good points around, like, why are we, like, bending on laws and regulations just to, like, let a developer do something? I think the biggest thing is, like, if the city's not gonna take care of the Bikini Tar, the Bikini Hostel or finish the Baywalk, what choices do we have left but to compromise? With a developer who's gonna bring kind of new and modern building to the neighborhood? I do believe we need it, and I think it looks much better. So I, at this point, am in support of it, when before I was not. Thanks so much.
Thank you. And I just wanna clarify in defense of Gail Durham. Apparently, she does live on West Avenue, so wanna clarify the record.
So she has her hand raised, do you want to allow her to speak again?
Gail, if that's simply to say where you live, I just remedied that, so.
Okay, she's lowered her hand.
Okay.
That concludes our callers on Zoom.
Okay. All right, I close the public, but go ahead, I know you showed up late, go ahead.
All right, greeting everyone. I'd like to thank everyone for their participation, and online and in person. And I'd like to reiterate some thoughts of maybe four or five callers back that mentioned that we need to move forward. They mentioned the homelessness issue, this is something that I am passionate about in terms of the public safety of our community. An example, yesterday, on Washington Avenue near Pizza Rustica, a homeless gentleman was speaking inappropriately to many of the members of the community, allegedly threatened an S assault on this, on this woman. And the gentleman, of course, was intercepted by City Miami Beach PD. They also did remove a, what appeared to be a metallic bar or object. And this was all in broad daylight. So again, we do have many issues, and this board is trying the best that they can to take all perspectives into consideration. So we thank you, we need to really thank the people, the members of the board, Mr. Marks, Mr. Needleman, Mr. Frieden, Mr. Cement, Brian, you of course, Mr. Elias, Melissa, it's C-M, Elizabeth, and everyone else. So we thank you, and again, we'll do the best that we can, but we do have a problem, and it cannot be swept under the rug. And with that, I yield my time.
Okay.
Sir, can you give me your name? I got your name.
Yes, my name is Luigi Mary, that is L-U-I-D as in Delta, G-I. My last name is M-A-R-Y, 11632 Meridian Avenue.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, so we're gonna close the public hearing. I'm just giving my two cents, obviously, there are strong feelings on both sides of this. My personal view, and there's a good saying in law that reasonable minds can differ. And it doesn't mean anyone's right or wrong. I personally think this project is much better, what's being proposed than what would be as a matter of right. But again, that's just one opinion. But what I don't wanna do is delay the recommendation, whether it's positive or negative. So with that being said, I'll start with Keith.
Yes. I'm not against development, I think Monad was brilliant. I just have problems based on past experience with developers in the city, that if you give an overlay and you multiply the FAR based on items that aren't related directly to that structure. For example, the Bikini Hostel, which should be a commission, mayor, city manager issue. If you start adding in items like the Baywalk, I don't think developers should get credit. I think public, the public need and the public benefit are items, and I'm gonna just defer.
Yeah, and by the way, I wanted to say one thing, and to tag on, I'm like, I agree with you.
Yeah.
And so my view has nothing to do with that.
Nothing to do with that.
I just think it's a better project, but go ahead.
I just wanna state that I think the public benefits are the ones that I'm seeing the commission do. You know, incentivizing FAR for long-term rentals. Incentivizing converting hotels to condos. I think the, we got it backwards. That we should not have economic drivers such as developers telling us that they need extra variances based on public benefits. I think the public benefits should be driven by the planning board and the commissioners. That's item number one. So, in summary, I do agree with the negative view. And this may not be popular, but I do believe that it was overly generous because of giving benefit to the Baywalk and to the Bikini Hospital. I think that if we're going to rec, I personally think we should just say negative and let it to the commission. But if we're going to give recommendations on maximums, which I disagree with, it needs to be cranked down from what the 150 height and the 475 FAR.
You know, this city, like, like all cities, is changing. In forty, fifty years from now, a lot of these buildings we see aren't gonna be here for one reason or another, and they're gonna be replaced with something. You know, the question is what? And, and, you know, that'll be a process like we're going through now, the planning board, neighborhood meetings, commission meetings, and, and, and many more. Last month, we heard another one in North Beach. That one was a very unique situation with the size of the lot, it had, you know, probably overwhelming neighborhood support. It had a historic building on, on site, a very historic building on site that was gonna be rebuilt. So we look at, you know, every, every application differently. You know, this one, though, I, I, I believe is out of scale with, with the as-built environment on, on West Avenue. You know, it, it, it does stand out, and, and I'm not saying it's, we're gonna look like Sunny Isles or Brickell. You know, it's just, when you look at it, it just, it, it stands out, that's all I can say. And I think we need to be, be careful about, you know, going in that direction. That's not to say that, you know, whatever's gonna be built there is, is, if something does get built, won't be a little taller. But I think this one, as it's, as it's designed, is just, is, is too much. You know, and, and I'm, I'm basing it on, I mean, my, again, I agree with Keith. I mean, I, I would recommend a negative recommendation to the city. But again, it's based on the merits of the, of the proposal. It's not, it's not what a developer is going to provide to the city or whatever public benefit. I think going down that path is really scary, because basically takes a zoning code and says, we don't really need it anymore, we'll just let someone come in and say what they wanna build, and the city will put a price tag on it, and, and we'll go from there. So we wouldn't need a zoning code. So, you know, it, it's, it's, again, it's on the merits of the development. Now, with all, with all that said, I'm not opposed. You know, you, you made a good point, or someone did, that, you know, all the buildings there on West Avenue are the same height. If you wanted to go up a little bit, you know, maybe have it stand out. I don't know how we'd quantify that, if fifty feet, four or five stories, something like that, to make it look different. I, I mean, I'm, you know, we can talk about that. But this one, this as proposed, I just think is, is out of scale with, with what's on West Avenue now. So, I mean, again, I would recommend a negative recommendation.
I, I am, I think it's a great-looking project. I, I hope you can find a, a solution, you know, to, to quell all the neighbors' concerns and, and reach an agreement on it. But for me, you know, the, the zoning code is, should stay in place unless there's really exceptional circumstances. And if we are going to, you know, go back on the, or make exceptions to the zoning code, I think that we need to have, you know, full neighborhood buy-in, full neighborhood support. I think that's possible, but we're not there yet. And we've clearly heard from some of the boards that, that they're still in the process of, of discussing this and reaching agreements. And I, you know, I understand the need to, you know, give an up or down recommendation today and, and not prolong this further. So I'm not personally ready to give a favorable recommendation. I think I probably would be had, you know, you know, more discussions and negotiations taken place to, to find a middle ground between where staff is recommending and where, you know, the, the developer is looking to do, what, looking, between what staff is recommending and what the developer is looking to do. So I think there's more room to negotiate, more room to create a, a project that everybody's happy with. I just don't think that it's there yet. And so, given the time constraints and the requests from, you know, the developer, the applicant to, to push this forward, I'm a no vote for now.
A few questions, so, Michael, what would be the timing of the conveyance? So assuming that this gets approved and, and you all close on the Bikini Hostel, what's the timing of conveyance to the city?
Well, I think that we would take on the responsibility of the demolition, remediation if necessary. So I would say, but the use would stop right away. The conveyance.
Right away, and then?
Yeah, maybe six to nine months.
Six, nine months, understood. And then all parking for this project is contained within the subterranean garage? Understood, okay. I mean, generally, I'd say there are definitely things in the scale of this project within the context of, of the neighborhood that might concern me. But the way that I look at it is, right now, what's there is an absolute blight to the community. And I think many of the neighbors who called in today seem to share that sentiment. Additionally, if you were to have a developer that were to come in and do a project as of right, it would, it might even be worse than what's there right now. Certainly, as it relates to the streetscape and kind of the views that you, or maybe the light that comes in through the side setbacks. So because of that, and a lot of the things that we look at at this board, I like to kind of weigh what's there right now, what could they do as of right, and what could we try and help inform to have an overall better, you know, result? I mean, I, for one, would be a favorable recommendation, mostly because I think that, you know, if we just kill it, then it kind of leaves what's there now, or it leaves for someone else to come in and do something as of right, which is, again, nothing great and probably worse. So I, I want the city to have a seat at the table, I'd be in favor of pushing it forward, seeing what the commission can, you know, help kind of craft and, and shape and continue doing outreach with the community and hopefully help inform an even better project than what we have in front of us now. I mean, because of that, and I would be a favorable, but obviously looking forward to hearing what everyone else has to say.
Yeah, and I already made my comment. I think I'm happy that there's a lot more community outreach to go, there's gonna be another meeting. I, again, like I said, you'll just said, I, I just find that the proposed project, to me, is better than what would be as existing for a number of reasons. One is a significant decrease in density. The public benefit, although I agree with Keith that that shouldn't go hand in hand, but the reality is that that's part of the deal. And I just think it's a prettier building than what could be built. But that being said, I hope that between Um, but that being said, um, I hope that between now and the first reading for commission, that there's a lot more community outreach and that, um, hopefully there can uh, come to an agreement. I, I find it a little distressing that the staff report is based upon a prior proposal, not the reductions.
No, it is, it is based upon the reductions, but it's not, it's not enough.
Okay, I understand that, but, okay. Anyway, that being said, Melissa, go ahead.
I share a similar uh, position to Yashil and Brian here. Um, I think overall, it's a positive, uh, the, the project. I think we're adding um, um, we're, we're adding something that is way better than what we have right now. Um, and I don't think any of the three cases and errors are gonna be pleasing everyone if we keep it such as, it's not a good idea. If we keep it as, as of right, it's not a great project either, and this has also got um, a lot of people fired up as well. I'm not sure what the right um, FAR and density should be. My concern is a bit of the precedent it sets in the neighborhood. I kinda, we have to recognize that real estate cost right now is up, development cost is up, and that's the reality. We're not gonna be seeing buildings being knocked down to be rebuilt in our affordable housing-type buildings. That's something the city needs to take up. Uh, but as far as, you know, private buildings being developed, um, this is a new reality we're gonna be dealing with. And somehow, um, it would have been great, or would be great, to have um, an a- analysis from the city that sort of makes us understand um, the minimum costs and redevelopment in certain areas. And so that we have sort of a baseline of knowing what's actually a reality for these neighborhoods, and so that people can have some actual facts to, versus everyone saying, well, you know, this is a developer just trying to make tons of money. It would be nice to have some real data to work with and know what's realistic in redeveloping some of these buildings in certain neighborhoods. And it would be also a way of the city to put a blueprint down so that we could review some of these FAR um, um, you know, standards right now to redefine what is the reality of, of redeveloping in these neighborhoods. So there's a responsibility to pick these neighbors, neighborhoods out and put a blueprint so that we can base our, our decisions in, in a way that's more consistent across the neighborhood versus saying yes to individual cases and, and projects like this. Um, and to Keith's point, um, I agree that we shouldn't be looking at this based on the uh, benefits that they're offering the community, at least not from the planning board point of view. We should be looking at this as a development project. Um, but I didn't, wouldn't want to discourage necessarily developers to be um, looking into adding benefits to the community. I think a lot of times, um, that's, that's, it's, it's a responsibility developers have, but it should be driven by the residents and not so much of a, a way of buying, um, our approval at least. Um, and on that note, um, as I said, um, I'm consistent with Brian and, and Yashil here in uh, wanting to see this, this project um, move forward.
I guess it's my turn. Um, I had a couple of questions. Have, have you all read the city recommendations as far as reduction in height? Michael, um, the reduction in height and what they're re- recommending as far as the maximum FAR? And would you be able to, to agree to those?
We can't agree to any further reduction in height. As Michael said earlier, three thirty is about as low as we can go. And our FAR has been reduced to five point seven five. We also feel that's pretty much as low as we can go.
You're killing me. I can't agree to this. I can't agree to, you know, I have to go with what planning does and what they say. And um, I agree with, with what Keith has said. I agree with what a lot have said. As far as getting rid of um, the bikini, that's kind of a no-brainer. But I also think that's something that's the responsibility of the city. This is, um, I guess it's the anti-live local. Um, I think that, you know, we have to listen to what the neighbors say, and we've listened to that earlier when, when we heard uh, the outdoor entertainment um, on Collins. Um, I'd like you to come back with something else. I don't, something that's more in line with what is compatible with the neighborhood. Um, so.
All right, so Michael, what's the vote count that you need for?
Well, it's just, um, um, to, to be in favor or against a majority, so four, four seconds.
All right, 'cause it sounds like the board's kind of reflective of what we heard today from the community. So, um, why don't, uh, Keith, your first move, why don't you make a motion?
Well, I'd, I'd like to make a uh, motion to support the.
The city staff, so send it with an unfavorable recommendation?
Correct.
Okay, is there a second on that?
I'm gonna second it.
Okay, uh, I think Scott seconded it. So let's do a roll call on this one, please.
So this would be for a, a negative recommendation, um, as recommended by staff.
And, and this commission will see the vote count, right?
Yeah, yeah, it'll break it down, so it's not gonna be steady as you know.
Go ahead, okay.
Uh, Mr. Frieden.
Yes.
Mr. Cement.
No.
Ms. Latone.
No.
This, this is the negative, this is, this is.
Oh, yes, sorry.
You're voting yes for the negative recommendation.
Sorry.
Um.
Yes.
Mr. I said, Mr. Needleman.
Yes.
And uh, Mr. S- Mr. Um, Mr. Elias?
No.
And um, Ms. Beatty.
No.
So that's a, a four to three negative recommendation.
Great, thank you very much for transmitting it. We appreciate it very much.
And I hope that, that, that will reflect that more work needs to be done.
Yes.
Hopefully they can come to an agreement, but, you know, I think that's reflective of what we heard today. I think people are in favor and they're against, so.
Yeah.
And, and, and it's not, and, and listen, I think it's a beautiful project. I really do. Um, I think it's better than as of right, but I, I wish there were more people here to support and/or any, we don't have, there's really not a lot of information that we have. I feel like we need more. Um.
So, Michael, what's it, did we do both or was that, do we have to do?
Yeah, that's, that's for both.
All right, for seven and eight, we don't need to do, just ever both. All right. All right, I'm sorry, you finished, Elizabeth? Okay, thank you guys. You know, it's a tough, but we wish you the best. All right, we'll do one more and then we'll break for lunch. We're under new applications, planning board file nine, number nine. Planning board file oh five zero seven three seven, Lincoln Road Waste Residential Use Incentives. I guess they go hand in hand, nine and ten, correct, Michael?
Nine and, so actually, um, nine, ten, eleven, twelve are all sort of related. We'll take nine and ten together, which is for Lincoln Road West, and then eleven and twelve for Lincoln Road um, East. Do you wanna take these, um, we can, we can, we can do um, West Avenue and then take a break for lunch? I mean, I'm sorry, do the west portion of Lincoln Road and then take a break for lunch?
Yeah, which, that's, items which?
Nine and ten.
Perfect, let's do that.
Okay. So this staff report begins on page, um, ninety-nine of the board packages. And just to make it more understandable, I've asked the board members to take a look at the map, which is on page, let's see, on page one hundred and thirteen of the board packages. 'Cause this breaks down the um, the Lincoln Road West section to area one, two, and three. Because the heights and FAR changes depending on the area that you're in, with a higher height and higher FAR, closer to Seventeenth Street, and the lower height, a lower FAR increase closer to the, the Flamingo Park um, neighborhood. And so this is similar to the West At Washington Avenue residential use incentives that came before the board um, last year, which is to provide um, residential incentives to increase or provide incentives for residential development, in this case along um, Lincoln Road versus Washington Avenue. So I'll just go through some of the, some of the, um, the changes. Now, compared to um, the Washington Avenue changes, the heights and FAR proposed here is much less. Whereas on Washington Avenue, the proposal was to go from a two point O FAR to four point O. In this case, the proposal's go to, is to go from, from two point two five to three, or from two point five to three point five. So the, the proposed FAR increase is much less compared to what you saw on um, Washington Avenue, but it's a very similar ordinance.
And sorry, just to pause you there, is that because of the Lincoln Road streetscape and they're, they don't want to be telling?
It's, it's, um, because it already, it already has a higher allowance for FAR, which is above two anyway. And also based upon the commission sponsor, it wasn't intended to be um, a more radical increase in, in FAR. So, um, as, as again, looking at page one, one thirteen, you can see the breakdown in, in the, in the map. I'll just go through briefly what these um, changes are. So for area one, which is the pink area, this would be for properties along Seventeenth Street, um, between Lincoln Lane North, from Alton Road to Drexel, Drexel Avenue. And this would, as proposed, be an uh, FAR increase. Again, all these increases are incentives are for residential development only, and for projects that only have residential development above the ground, ground floor. We have to agree to perpetuity, not have any sort of non, non-trans, any sort of transit uses. So again, for the um, area one, an increase in FAR from two point two five to three point O for lots of less than forty-five thousand square feet, and from two point seven five to three point five for lots greater than forty-five thousand square feet. In terms of height, it'll allow a maximum increase in height from eighty feet up to a hundred and fifty feet. Now, area two, which is in the, the purple area in the middle, this would be for um, Lincoln Road North properties with a lot line on the north side of Lincoln Road between Alton Road and Drexel Avenue. This would include an FAR increase of two point five to three point O, and a maximum building height of fifty feet to one hundred feet. Now, because this also includes properties which are on Lincoln Road, in order to maintain that character, would require that for additions that go above that fifty-feet height, require a setback of fifty feet from Lincoln Road or a setback of tw- and a setback of twenty-five feet from any adjacent side, side street. Now, this would also include an allowance of the HBB to waive those um, additional setback requirements as they saw appropriate. Now, the third area is the area in yellow, which is the area on the south side of Lincoln Road and north of Lincoln Lane North, which is the area that's abutting the um, the Flamingo Park Historic District, the RM two, the RM one section. This would be a, a lower maximum, the lower increase in FAR from two point five to two point seven five, and a maximum building he, building height increase from fifty feet um, to seventy-five feet. This would also allow um, multi-story rooftop additions, subject to review by the store preservation board right now. The store preservation board can only approve a single-story rooftop addition. This would allow a multi-story rooftop addition. Currently in the code, if the um, if somebody's proposing more than a, a roof, more than a one-story rooftop addition, would require demolition down to the ground of an, of a contributing structure. So this, this would allow the, the retention of a, retain, more of a retention of a, a existing contributing structure and allow appropriate rooftop additions subject to the um, historic preservation board. Now, as a condition of all of these um, increases, it would also require that, or amend the parking requirements. No parking, no, no off-street parking would be, would be required for um, residential development. It actually would prohibit um, certain off-street parking. Um, let's see what else. This also would remove, remove the current incentives for hotel projects on Lincoln Road between Pennsylvania and Lenox, and remove the FAR incentives for hotels on lots less than forty-five thousand square feet. So again, the intent, the intent here is to increase FAR in height for residential development, to allow incentives and um, reduce incentives that were in place for hotel development. Now again, this is the, just the first step in the process, so this is just a um, the first meeting of the planning board. After this meeting, we'll take a couple, take comment. There'll be a public outreach meeting. It'll come back to the planning board for a final transmit, transmittal meeting, and then move on to the city commission. Another workshop meeting and then a final um, um, meeting before the city commission. So at this time, we're just asking the board, review the application, provide any comments, continue the um, ordinances to the May sixth meeting. Now, one of the thing that the board also, that the line is committee asked the board to consider, just like um, Washington Avenue, the line is committee asked the board to consider whether or not to be appropriate to include a TDR program, whereas um, FAR be transferred from a, from a sending district to this receiving district. In this case, it's not, it's not, it's critical because the FAR increases much less compared to Washington Avenue, but it is part of the um, recommendation from the line is committee.
Okay.
With that, um, we do have.
I assume you're not here on this item? Okay.
We do have Commissioner Suarez in the line, if you'd like to hear from him.
Uh, sure, we'll hear from David.
I don't know if I'm gonna remember or not. I'm joking.
David?
Hey guys, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hey, I, I just wanna, I just wanna really touch up on what Keith said at the last item, and he, and he hit it on the head. He said, you know, we should be having, we should be putting forward incentives for development that we wanna envision as the city, not the other way around. We don't wanna have a developer telling us what they envision for our city. It's what we envision. Now, for Lincoln Road West, there's not, there's no, you could, you could do public records request all day. There's not a developer that came to me that said, hey, I wanna develop Lincoln Road. I truly believe that if you wanna really jumpstart Lincoln Road and you wanna reshape the economy of Lincoln Road, the perfect way to do it is with mixed use. I mean, how cool would it be to live above Lincoln Road, to come down, go shopping, and then just go back home? And so, the, this is the vision uh, uh, of what I believe some of our most struggling districts need. And I think it's important to really hit on the fact that we're incentivizing the development that we want, not the other way around. And so, uh, I think this carefully, this, this piece of legislation carefully uh, balances that. Okay, these are not luxury homes. They are specific for uh, working-class people who wanna get a head start in Miami Beach, something similar to what I had when I moved to Miami Beach for the first time. And I think it's a, a great way to in- incentivize more of a neighborhood on Lincoln Road. So, uh, I just wanted to share my thoughts, and, and I wanted to congratulate Keith on his, on his first uh, day on the, on the planning board. And uh, you guys spoke very well the last one. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner, are you still?
David?
Are you still there?
Yeah, I'm here.
I have a question for you. Um, so I was on Lincoln Road yesterday, just kind of tooling around, wanted to kind of get a feel for this. I'm a big fan of uh, mixed-use developments and, and I've seen quite a few of them. I wanted to get your opinion on what you thought might happen to the retail that is below some of that. Uh, would you, what would you do with the buildings?
Well, the retail stays, the retail, the retail stays, and I, I believe you can, can, can touch up on this, but most of the development for residential will be set back quite a bit.
Okay.
So, retail stays there, uh, and it's, it's truly a mixed-use environment. I mean, if you go to any city in the world that's thriving, it's all mixed use. You have retail on the bottom and you have residential top. And you know, the people that work in retail, instead of getting in their cars and driving on Forty-first Street or MacArthur to go home and adding to the traffic, they just walk upstairs to their home.
So, so can I make a suggestion, or I don't, I'm not quite sure if this is, how, how to do that? Um, part of the problem on Lincoln Road and, and, and much of the retail spaces across the city is that they have those insets, um, where the storefront window is uh, more, is more parallel or closer to the sidewalk and to the street than the actual door. And I was going to ask if those, if those are things that you can incorporate into these incentives or new developments to have them uniform, so that you don't have people sleeping in those doorways, uh, so that you have the doorways lit, um, so that.
Well, I don't know, with, with all of those, a lot of those doorways are historic, so I, I'm, I may not, yeah, I mean, we, that may not be allowed where you can demolish or re- reshape a doorway. I believe, pardon, uh, I just had an issue with the doorway. And um, you know, but, but I, I hear what you're saying.
Right.
And, and by the way, having a much more residential neighborhood will really drive out the homeless from Lincoln Road. You're gonna have more eyeballs on the ground, you're gonna have more residents to call code or police. And so, it's uh, but it, it, thank you for mentioning homeless, because I think this is going to definitely address homelessness on Lincoln Road.
Okay, thank you.
And just to follow up.
Thanks, David.
Break into this, uh, second speaker to follow up on the, the comment on the, uh, recessing of the um, storefronts. Yes, a lot of those entrances are historic, but as well as that, um, the code requires that these doors swing out, and they can't swing out into the right-of-way, so that's why you see those recesses.
Can, can we, we modify code all the time, especially when it, like, we did this.
That's, that's a building code safety issue. You can't have, you can't have the do, the doors swing inward.
No, 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 if we, if we extended, like, when Amazon Go was coming onto Lincoln Road, they re- retrofitted the whole space. They got HBB approval and they changed the way the doorways opened. So could, I mean, that might be something to look at. I just, that's.
The doors, the doors have to swing out. They can't swing in, they have to swing out. That's a, that's a building code requirement. It's a safety requirement. It's a safety requirement. Otherwise, otherwise, if you're exiting the building, there's a rush, and you have to swing in, you could have people trapped and can't get out.
But you could have them both ways, can't you?
It would be an issue then if you could, if you could open, push it out, and it was on the street level, then you could be knocking at it. Yeah, it would be an issue.
I guess it's just that there's some that are...
I think as well, you know, factoring, having light, appropriate lighting to light those spaces, not having recesses under, like, overhanging windows, you don't have, you don't want to create, you don't want to create a, a place that harbors...
And even if it's, you know, I was walking with one of the officers yesterday, and he said, you know, to the people that, that are unhoused, they don't have, they don't care if there's light or not, they're going to knock the, knock the light out. And, but it, if you projected the light from the inside of the store down into the space as opposed to having it directly above head, that might make a difference. Those are just some suggestions that...
So your whole concern with the layout of the doorways and windows is with the homelessness?
Is the light.
Is that what the homelessness is about?
Yep, yep. It's just, it's just because it was pretty bad, and I'm all for this, though.
Well, guys, if you have any more questions, I'm here.
Yeah, no, we, I think it's a great idea, David. Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom?
Yeah, we have Jane Crupp.
Jane?
Yes, hi. Just unmuting myself. I'd just like to elaborate more on Commissioner Suarez's comments as being a longtime resident of Miami and New York City, where we have very successful mixed-use in New York City, especially downtown, where I lived for 45 years in Soho, where we all lived above the store, basically. And it works really well. The problem is with Miami Beach incentivizing residential and mixed-use is that I think Miami Beach is the only city I've ever been in that has outdoor speakers, outdoor entertainment, rooftop entertainment. And nobody wants to live next door to a bar, especially a 5:00 AM bar. Nobody wants to hear music blaring all night. This is the fundamental issue of mixed-use incentivizing in Miami Beach. You have to, you know, nobody wants, like I said, nobody wants to live next door to a bar. It's impossible to contain outdoor noise, particularly traffic, which you get in New York, which is probably the worst. So I think you need to, you know, this whole idea with the Collins Avenue, I live right near 1350 Collins, having outdoor entertainment there is just the wrong message. That means every other, we have other outdoor spaces on Collins up to Fifteenth Street, they're all going to want it. And we had it illegally two years ago. All, we were up all night till 3:00 AM with the subwoofers booming, not only through the building, they go through the substrate and travel, the vibration travels. You cannot contain the vibration. It's not a decibel level. It's a vibration issue, which is completely measured by a different instrument, by the way. So my comment is, I lived in Soho, very successful. The first thing we did, a part of the Soho Alliance, we got rid of the late-night entertainment, and that's when all the developers came in, did all the high-end stores. And today, Soho generates most of the sales tax for all of New York City. Highly successful mixed-use. So again, you're the planning department, you're the ones that allow the speakers. That's the main problem here in Miami Beach. You cannot have mixed-use with outdoor speakers. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. That concludes our callers on Zoom.
Okay. Keith? Any questions or comments?
No, other than I think it's a, it's a good idea. I am for this type of commission-driven, public-benefit, encouraging development. And that, and Lincoln is certainly an area, if we could get mixed-use, that would be perfect. So I'm for it.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a good, mixed-use is a good idea. You see a lot of cities going in that direction. I just have a few concerns with, with this, and I think we brought them up when we discussed Washington Avenue. I mean, personally, I, I think the height is a little excessive. You know, you're talking about basically 15 stories on Lincoln Road. You know, that's, I mean, I like the idea of residents above, but 15 stories may be a little too high. Also, we talked about, you know, keeping a, well, basically, this gives the Historic Preservation Board the ability to waive 50% of the required setback from Lincoln Road. Dovetails into what I, well, it expands on what I said before. You know, 15 floors, close up to, I mean, if anything, it should be set back as far as possible from Lincoln Road.
I think, I think just to clarify, Scott, the 150 feet would be for properties fronting Seventeenth Street. For properties, for properties fronting Lincoln Road, the maximum height would be 100 feet.
Okay, so 10 stories. I mean, it's the same, same...
And the setback for, for Lincoln Road is what?
Fifty feet, fifty feet.
So it's a doubling. It's the same idea that, you know, you wouldn't want to see 10 floors. If anything, that should be set back as far as possible. There shouldn't be any waiver of that. We're giving a lot, is what I'm getting at, and if a developer wants to take advantage of it, you know, he should stick to it, not ask for anything more.
That could be one of the recommendations, too, because, you know, the planning board could say, stick with that 50 feet and make it a variance if somebody wanted to make...
Not even, not even a variance.
We can't, we can't stop, we can't stop, I guess we have to put a no variance provision in for that.
So Scott, that, so as a, for instance, the, I think it's the five below on Lincoln Road that took forever and ever to get approved, that's 50 feet back. And so, that, just to give you an idea of how far back that is, I'm not, I, I mean, I understand that these are historic buildings, but you got to remember, these are, these are really hard spaces to lease, they're hard to get, even, even if you've got them above it. I don't, I don't, how, do you really think 10 stories is, is that much? I mean, it's, I don't...
Compared to what's there now, yes.
Well, I mean, if we're going to evolve as a city, then you're going to have to...
Look, I talked about that before, you know, we're, a lot of the buildings that are here now, that are here now are not going to be here in 40, 50 years. We are evolving. I think we should do it little by little, not so much just double heights everywhere.
So maybe these are recommendations. I mean, who came up with all of these, these...
This came out of, to the City Commission sponsor and the Landes Committee.
So Landes is already, okay. So they've already reviewed, I mean...
Well, a lot of these have been pushed through. You know, I, I...
We did look at it, unlike Washington Avenue, which had more of a consistent height, we did look at modulating the height, so the higher height is pushed towards Seventeenth Street. The north side of Lincoln Road is higher, the south side of Lincoln Road is only a 25-foot increase in height. So we do try to modulate the height depending on...
And Elizabeth, I'm not saying not 10, I'm just saying, if you're going to put 10 stories or 100 feet, set it way back from Lincoln Road.
What is the Albion? I was just there. What is it, like, 10?
That's probably closer to, yeah.
I think it's 10. So I mean, I think that we, there were some people at the, that I was with yesterday, and I didn't, I didn't find that that was egregious.
And that's on the east, so that...
And then, exactly. And then just down from that, you've got the clock tower.
Because it's, well, they're separated. I mean, this is, this is wholesale change, all up and down Lincoln Road. So in theory, you could have this every, every lot.
And listen, guys, you know, I also think it's important, you know, so, yeah, I'm still here. I'm a panelist now. You know, look, I, I, guys, I think it's important to note, especially based on the last item you guys heard, is that we want to incentivize what we want, okay? I don't want to have a, I don't want to pass this and have a developer come to me saying, hey, we need an extra this, we need an extra that. Or, or, how about this? A developer comes to Lincoln Road, has one project on Lincoln Road that they want to do, and then they have this massive-scale thing of building a concept that they have, and then they end up getting it. At least, if we pass this, we can say, look, we're giving you the best incentive possible to develop what we envision for Miami Beach. And it doesn't give them an excuse to say, oh, well, well, this is what we need. We say, look, this is, we gave you enough room to work with, this is what we want, and I'm okay with putting a variance, Mr. Belush, I don't know what you called it, but making so that there's no variances, I'm fine. But, you know, what was said earlier, I think Melissa said it, construction costs are up, development costs are up.
Yep.
What's the point of passing something that's not going to, nothing is going to happen? I mean, if you look at Lincoln Road, or not Lincoln Road, Washington Avenue for the hotel incentive, we've had that for how long? You know, five, seven years? And they only built two hotels. And I'm not trying to build hotels, I'm trying to build places where people can live. And if you look at Seventeenth Street, which is not on Lincoln Road, it's, it's like the most, it's one of the most embarrassing streets in Miami Beach. I mean, you have like a daycare, then you have the City Hall, then you have a bunch of garage. It's just, it doesn't make any sense. And it's the perfect avenue for, for residential development.
And back to what we're saying before, what I was saying before, kind of having a blueprint, once you have a whole neighborhood or a whole street like that, and there's an expectation of where it's going, then it allows us not to be dealing with individual projects where you have like, you know, a, a street of residents that are affected by, by one individual project. You have now residents who know that there's a potential for all across Lincoln Road what the transformation is going to be, and so people know what to expect. Because this is what is really upsetting, is seeing residents, like we saw in the last time, showing up for, for this past project, who bought units, condo units, expecting that the FAR would not change on the building next door, and now they're, they're left, you know, losing their view. And so I just think it's important that we, we, we see the necessity for this on Lincoln Road, that we approve something all across these streets like Washington and, and Lincoln Road, and we give something to the residents that they now know the direction we're going. And I think this is a positive one, just, you know, David is motivated for the right reasons, seeing these areas transform. We have a lot of people that are concerned about more affordable condos. These kinds of units will be more affordable condos, these are not going to be the high ends that we're seeing elsewhere, but it also has a cost, so we have to go with height and an increased height. And so I know it's kind of sort of strange to picture Lincoln Road with 10-floor buildings, but I think with, with it being consistent all across, yeah.
And again, like I, like I mentioned, I'm not saying I'm opposed to the height, I'm just saying we are, we are, we are doubling the height, and I think the Commissioner agrees with me, and we're laying out, these are the ground rules. We're saying, these are the ground rules, stick to them. We're giving, we increased our height, our FAR so much, you know...
Don't, don't come back and ask for more.
Don't ask for a little bit more. That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm asking for.
And you're absolutely right, and we need to make sure that that's consistent, that we don't have these...
And I think the commission, the sponsor is, is open to that, and, I mean, personally, I think it shouldn't be for setbacks and any, anything else. I mean, you know, well, I know things come up where maybe a variance may be needed, but, but I think on things like height and, I'm sorry, height and setbacks, yeah, there shouldn't be any variances allowed.
And also, and also, when you do these kinds of projects, the, the bad retail goes away, because like Jane Crupp was saying, nobody wants to live above that. I mean, I think it just naturally... Well, you're just going to try, you're going to have, you're going to have a built-in clientele on the roads, you're going to try to...
Another point, just, just to bring up, and, and this is, I mean, I sat on HBB for a while, and I know there, there were times when, you know, applications came in front of us and they wanted to add on to a contributing building, and, or they were going to preserve it, retain it. When you add on to buildings, especially if you're going to go 10 floors or however many, you know, there's no developer that's going to keep that footprint of the historic building and build on top of it. It, what, what's going to happen is, it's going to be demolished, except for, except for maybe the facade.
I don't know about that.
And that's what's...
Some of these, on Lincoln Road, these are solid buildings.
What, when you talk 10 stories or even three stories on top of these older buildings, maybe three stories can be done, but it would take massive structural, shoring inside the building. Most likely, a developer's not going to do that, they're going to, they're going to, they're going to look to just say, well, we'll keep the facade if that, and build. So just, just, you know, and this is going year, you know, I think years into the future that, you know, you're going to...
In Alabama, they've got, in Alabama, Georgia...
Wait a minute, Elizabeth, let me just finish my, my, my thought. You know, you may end up losing a lot of those buildings on Lincoln Road. And I'm not, and is that a good thing or a bad thing? I'm just saying, that's, that's where this may lead, what this might lead to.
I think engineering has come a long way, and if you can shore up buildings in South Alabama that have been exposed to God knows what, then we can do it, too.
Michael, question. The, the law that the governor passed, was it a year or so ago, that, that kind of superseded local ordinances about ability to tear down historic properties? Does that include commercial, or is that, was that only residential?
I think that only applies to properties that are in the coastal construction zone along the ocean, so it wouldn't apply, wouldn't apply to this location, this location.
All right.
One question, is there any incentive attributed to workforce housing or inclusion of workforce housing as part of this?
That's not, that's not included as part of this, which it was included as part of the Washington Avenue. I think the issue there, here is that the FAR increase is so, so minimal versus Washington Avenue, we had a 2.0 FAR increase to play with. So I think that recommendation was that 0.5 be part of the attainable or, or workforce or attainable housing, and then a certain percentage be also for transfer development rights or TDR program. In this case, your maximum FAR increase is only between 0.5 and 0.75.
I, I think this is incredible, in terms of all the, you know, thoughts of how to kind of revitalize Lincoln Road, this is what it's going to be. The only thing that I'd say is, if you look at Area One, there's a lot of, there are a lot of, I think, city parking lots there. So I don't know if, if the Commissioner or the Commission would be supportive of it, but I love to try and, you know, kind of to, to what Commissioner Suarez was saying, was let's kind of show the community what we want the city to be. So a lot of the real estate projects that we've seen here are these high-end condos, so maybe introducing an additional incentive to try and, you know, include some type of workforce housing component. So if, if you have kind of, you know, with incentives, it gets up to, what is it, a 3.5 FAR for a lot greater than 45,000 square feet? So maybe it gets up a little bit more if you include workforce housing or something along those lines.
Michael, are there a lot of historic buildings on, on Lincoln that are protected?
Yes, yeah, there are, yes.
Probably mostly.
Probably mostly, yeah. But they're mostly, you know, one or two stories.
And historic because of age or significant architect? I mean, what?
They're both age and they're significant, right. We could, we could come back with a list and show you the, you know, one of the most significant was like the Lincoln Theater on Lincoln Road, that's one of the largest ones. That was a very successful adaptive reuse from the theater space to the, the retail store, and it looks great from the outside, and even the inside, it has, you can, you can, if you know, you can see where the original theater space was and, and recall it and the interiors.
All right, so it sounds like, you know, there's nothing for us to do today on this, but...
This is just to review it, like we discussed...
What about the second recommendation? Is that something we should be doing today?
No, that'd be, that'd be for the, for the transmittal at the second, at the May meeting.
Okay, all right. So it sounds like we're all...
I'm just asking that the board continue both these items to the, to the May meeting date.
Okay. Do we need a move or...
Yeah, the motion.
To continue these items to the May...
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. All right, we'll take a quick lunch break.
If you want to, so we could do, since...
Let's just finish it.
Lincoln Road East now should be a shorter discussion because it's very similar.
Yeah.
So I think we can probably just do Lincoln Road East and then do the last one, which will be really minor, so we probably do this before taking, taking lunch.
That's fine, let's do it.
So the next two items are PB 250738, which is Comprehensive Plan Amendments related to Lincoln Road East, and PB 2500739, Land Development Regulation Amendments related to Lincoln Road, Lincoln Road East. Now, the staff report for these items begin on page 141 of the board packages, and just like the last items, we have a map to better highlight these areas, and the map can be found on page, can we find it here? On page 153 of the board packages. So this breaks out three different areas as well. We have the area on Seventeenth Street, north of Lincoln Lane North, which is highlighted green on the map. This would be to increase the FAR from 2.75 as currently zoned to 3.5 and increase the height from 80 feet to 125 feet. Area Two, which is in the, the blue or purple area in the center, this area is on the north side of Lincoln Road from Drexel Avenue to Collins Avenue, with an FAR currently of 2.75, would increase that to 3.5 and allow the maximum height from 50 feet to 125 feet. And then we have Lincoln Road South. Now, in this area, there are already taller buildings on Lincoln Road South, so this includes an F A R increase of two-point-seven-five to three-point-five, and raises the height from fifty feet to, um, a hundred-and-fifty feet. Now, we did note in this area, the height of some current properties, including, um, four-twenty Lincoln Road with a height of a hundred-and-three feet, um, and three-fifty Lincoln Road with a height of eighty feet, um, sixteen-fifty James Avenue with a height of seventy-six feet, and the clock, the four-oh-seven Lincoln Road has a height of a hundred-and-eighty-six feet. Now, again, this would be for, to create, um, a residential use incentives, to take advantage of those increased F A R that I mentioned. Now, also, in order to take advantage of the, um, the F A R in height increase, this would require that each project either have, have one of the following, either a covered tra, a covered transit shelter within fifteen-hundred feet of the development site, a contribution to the South Beach Public Benefit Fund, or they obtain the full building permit for the development within twenty-four months of the effective date of this ordinance. Um, as I mentioned previously, for the Lincoln Road, um, West, this does also include a provision that requires a fifty-foot setback for properties on Lincoln Road, um, it does allow multi-story rooftop additions, subject to review by the Store Preservation Board. This also does, as an incentive, um, waive the required mobility fees for projects that obtain a building permit by September first, uh, twenty-thirty. Now, just like the Lincoln Road S, this, Lincoln Road West, this would be a, um, a six-step process, today's the first step in this process, we would have a public outreach meeting between now and the planning board meeting on, on May sixth, and then as well as the two city commission meetings and another community outreach meeting, so, again, these were all reviewed in context by the land use meeting in November, because the, the land use committee asked, then, asked to review both the Washington Avenue incentives as well as the Lincoln Road East and West on the November meeting, and these are all coming to the planning board now, the Washington Avenue came before the planning board in, um, in January, so this time we're just asking for public comment and feedback, and to continue this applica, these applications to the May meeting.
Do these mirror each other? Do these mirror one another, the east and the west?
They're, um, similar, they're a little bit different in terms of the height and F A R, because Lincoln Road East already has higher height, a higher building, so there's a little bit higher, a little bit higher height is offered here, and we don't have the, um, the lower R M one district on the south side, which is pertaining to, which pertains to the Lincoln Road West.
Okay.
So we do believe these are constant, these, these do take in consideration the immediate context, and that's why we're different.
But they're a little bit higher?
A little higher on the east, because we already have-
That's, which, which I talked about just a little while ago.
On the east side of Collins as well, you have the higher oceanfront property, so the higher, the higher height is also pushed over here, this is also the city center area, which also has a higher height allowance. Well, we do have nobody, I think, in chambers, and there's nobody online with their hand raised for public comment, so I'll just leave it up to the board for, um, for a comment.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're all supportive, right?
Make a motion to continue to the May meeting?
Yeah, I'll second it. I think it's great.
Okay, all in favor? All opposed?
I think it's fantastic.
That's items eleven and twelve. And the last item for today is Planning Board twenty-five oh-seven-four-three Historic Preservation Board fee waiver for single-family home applications.
We're right along, um, this application is a city-sponsored item, and this begins on page one-hundred-and-eighty-one of the board packages. This initially came, um, from a referral by the city commission to the Land Use and Sustainability Committee meeting, um, which discussed the proposal on November twenty-fifth and recommended that the planning board transmit this with a favorable recommendation. What this does is waive the applica, application fees for, um, single-family homes that are in historic districts or individually designated as historic structures, it just waives the application fees. They would still be responsible for the hard costs in terms of the, the public notice, the, the mail notice, the site posting, and the, um, and the, say, the Herald notice, but it would waive the, the base application fee, which is about thirty-six-hundred hours for applications for single-family homes that have to make an application to the Store Preservation Board. Now, unlike homes outside of historic district, whenever you make some, even some minor changes to, um, homes that are designated in a historic district or individually designated, it may, um, require a review by the Store Preservation Board, so it just lessens the burdens for properties that do, um, wanna make improvements to the property and have to make an application to the Store Preservation Board. We noted only, I think, only five applications over the last, um, five years, so there's no, no cost implication for the city in terms of these applications, so we are recommending that the planning board transmit this to the city commission with a favorable recommendation.
What was the motivation for this? I was just about to ask.
Just to, just to, just to remove impediments for, um, historically designated homes for making an application for improvements to the property, just lessen the, the burden.
Okay. And what, what is normal, what's the normal cost?
The normal app, the application fee is about thirty-six-hundred dollars.
I don't have a problem with it. I'll move it.
All right, this, I'm, I'll open it for public comment, I see nobody here in chambers and nobody-
Nobody.
-online.
I'll move it if you like.
Make a motion?
Me.
Any questions or comments about it? Scott? No? Everyone in favor?
Second, we have a second on the motion?
A second.
Okay.
Anyone opposed? Congrats on finishing your first meeting, Keith.
Good job.
Welcome aboard.
And for making so many constructive comments.
Good job.
We do have about twenty ordinances on the agenda for next month, so be prepared for that.
What's that?
We have about, we have about, no, ten or fifteen ordinances on the agenda for next month, so we do have a long agenda, I'm serious, yes. Well, yeah, so, um, that brings a point, um, Mr. Latone asked everybody if they could let, let us know if they're, if they're gonna have, um, any conflicts with the meetings for the next several months, to let us know if we're gonna have any issues with meeting quorum for, um, for the summer.
Summer, like, maybe late June, July, or October, or September, or any of those, we're, we're trying to plan a trip for, this isn't being recorded, is it?
Still, we're still in that.
Oh, good, oh, I'm so excited. Um, yeah, everybody gets to hear, um, we're just-
We're just trying to plan a vacation, and we're gonna be gone for an extended piece of that period of time, and I'm getting this topic at the meeting or so.
Yes, I would just ask anybody to give me, um, if they're anticipated to be absent for any meeting coming up, so that we can make sure we have a quorum for those meetings.
Okay.
Sorry, I think we have the usual, there's no meetings in August, right?
Correct, no meetings in August.
And a pla, you can miss up to two meetings?
You can miss two meetings, right.
Right.